Thank you, Mr. Benson.
The United States will America, an interior republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with mother, king, and justice forever.
Now I would ask the staff to go around and allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Hi, Jeff Vogel.
Chris Thompson.
Carolyn White.
Dave Rubel.
Yerma Serna.
Kristi Douglas.
Cindy Hagerman, Neighborhood Services.
Tom Knight.
Brian Garner with Planning.
Ginny Axmaker, Planning.
Mike Brown, Parks and Recreation.
Michelle Rogers, City Manager's Office.
John Gallagher, SunCor Energy.
Leisha Burnett, SunCor Energy.
Chris Kramer, Planning Division.
Jim Hayes, Community Development.
Ms. Ryan Cordero, Government Relations.
Danny Thomas.
Benny Thomas.
Pam Strattler.
Phil Baca, Chief of Police.
Lenissa Blevins, Police Officer.
Chuck Baker, Commander with Police Department.
Brittany Morris Sanders, Director of Economic Development.
Thank you all very much for being here this evening. We're going to move into our citizen communication. This evening I have three people that have signed up. However, two of those folks are going to give the council an update, and I would like to not have them timed. I will ask the one citizen request to come forward, Ms. Kristi Douglas. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Kristi Douglas, 10970 Unity Parkway, Commerce City, Colorado, 80022. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmen. I first of all would like to extend a thank you, sincere thank you, for those of you who came to the CCPPA Gala on Friday night. It was a huge success. I'd like to extend a big thank you to Maria Carvahal, who was the coordinator this year. And she, well, actually, she's been the coordinator for the last couple of years, and she did a great job. And the Santa event the following day was a great success, even though the weather kept a lot of people away. We didn't have as many kids show up as we would have liked, but it was a really good event. So I did want to extend a thank you to all of you for coming. I wanted to let you know that this morning I attended the hearing for the CLG-CC, and that is the Oil and Gas Commission hearing. I had an opportunity to speak at that meeting, and there was a lot of good information that went before them this morning. So I hope that they are willing to listen to the public and get a handle on this problem that seems to have gotten a little bit out of control. And I would like to thank also the council people who came this morning, who were able to come. That was Renee Bullock, and Jim Benson, and then also Dominic Moreno for speaking this morning. Is it all right for me to give my email address? We had a meeting yesterday, and I'd like people to be able to contact me if they would like to get involved.
Well, here's the thing, you've given your email address. Because this is televised, you would be giving it to everybody, and if you're okay with that?
I want everybody to get involved.
As long as you're aware that the world will have it, that's fine.
Sure, that's fine.
If you want to give it to us personally, we can do that in another manner.
Okay.
But if you want to give it, and you don't care that the people watching can have it, then go right ahead.
Oh, it's pretty easy. It's contact Kristi, C-O-N-T-A-C-T-K-R-I-S-T-I, and that's at Comcast.net. So, you know, I welcome, you know, both sides of the issue. I want people to be educated, and most of all, to be involved.
Okay.
So, that's all we have tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming in. Hold on a second. I want to make sure if we have any council members that would like to respond. I don't see anything on here. Is this where it's supposed to be? There we go. Mr. Moreno.
Kristi, thank you for attending this morning and sharing your concerns with the Oil and Gas Commission. I just wanted to provide a brief update. I was on Twitter just prior to the meeting, and the Oil and Gas Commission meeting is still going.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. So it's not likely that they'll have a decision on the disclosure rule this evening, but they're expecting one soon.
Right. I thought one of the responses, or one of the presenters this morning, had a really good idea, and he said that if the chemicals are so proprietary that they needed, they need to have a patent on them. So any company who doesn't want to disclose those, if they're patented, then someone else can't use their formula or recipe, or whatever you'd like to call it. So there are a lot of good things that were brought to the table this morning, I thought, by the public. So thank you for that update.
Absolutely. And I believe Mr. Cordero will be providing an update later on as well.
All right. Thank you so much.
Kristi, I would like to personally thank you for getting involved and taking those kind of steps. I know Steve's up here and doing his part, but you live in that neighborhood, and it helps ensure the residents that you're one of those conduits to be able to bring information to us. And safety of the community is what that's all about. So I appreciate it as the mayor.
I appreciate you saying that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Next, I'm going to call up the two SunCor representatives, Leisha and John, to give us an update on oil spill over in Sand Creek. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, could you help us?
I don't think that's on. Hold on one second. Also, when you get started, can you just let us know who you're with, and an address for SunCor so that we have it for the record?
Mr. Mayor, city council members, and city staff. My name is John Gallagher, and I'm the Vice President of Refining for SunCor Energy. And I wanted to give you an update on the Sand Creek scenario, just so that you have an opportunity to hear the latest information, and also to ensure that you have an opportunity to question me and Leisha. This is Leisha Burnett. She's our manager of Stakeholder Relations and Communications. And so I guess I'd like to start off by apologizing to the city. Certainly, events like we had happen earlier last week, it's not the way that SunCor Energy likes to run its business. And, you know, I would like to apologize on behalf of SunCor for that. So we'd also like to just update you on what happened, and I'm not sure, I'll try to keep it at a high level so that we don't occupy all of your time, but an event occurred last Monday afternoon. One of our employees saw a slight oil sheen on Sand Creek, and that's the segment, really, from the Burlington Ditch to the South Platte River. We responded immediately. Once we saw the sheen, we weren't sure that it was ours. We had a suspicion that it could be, being an oil refinery. So we immediately took under our wing the emergency response effort for that, regardless of whose oil it was, we were going to clean it up. We happen to have very highly skilled, trained staff to do that. We have about 60 emergency response team members. So we responded. We got boom in the creek very, very quickly. We then started to go upstream and see if we could find the source. We did find a small weep of oil into Sand Creek. We immediately started activity to get that material corralled, if you like. So we started to build a dam around that to keep it separated from Sand Creek. By early Wednesday morning, we had stopped any new material from entering the waterway. And we, it's our belief that, you know, just based on observations and what we've seen, that we probably spilled about less than a barrel of material, gasoline-like material, into Sand Creek. And we then built the dam around that. In the meantime, working with the EPA and CDPHE very collaboratively, we decided we would build an interceptor trench. So basically, between the creek and the bank, we put a trench in. It's a 265-foot-long trench, five to six feet deep. It's lined with plastic filled with gravel, and we also have put in some stand pipes that will allow us to collect any material that comes down there. So it's intended to stop material going to the creek. We have clean material on both sides, so we think we have this thing corralled at this stage. And we are, the next kind of phase for us is to do some geoprobing, take some core samples, and try to understand the pathway. So we believe the pathway will take us back to the refinery, but we don't understand the pathway at this time, and we will be trying to uncover that over the next, probably take us a bit of time. The other piece that we're doing is we're starting to clean up the area between our isolation dams and the interceptor trench. So we're starting to take out, sorry, starting to take out any material in there and replace it with clean fill. And so we have started to recover some barrels, particularly in the interceptor trench. We've recovered somewhere between 50 and 70 barrels at this point in time. It's not exact, but that, I would say that's a good rough number. And I guess in, so that's kind of the incident as it stands. Our priorities for the incident really were to protect the environment and protect the waterways, to ensure the safety of our emergency response workers, because they're always the front line in these situations, so that. And then we also had a high priority to keep our stakeholders informed, and I know Leisha has done that with a number of the city staff, to ensure that you guys are on board with that. With that, what have I not talked about? I guess I would characterize our response, SunCor's response to this event as immediate, effective, in terms of isolating, in terms of stopping, and in terms of now recovering. And this will be with us for some time yet. It will be weeks and possibly months on some of these activities, but you have my full commitment to bringing this situation to a positive outcome, and, you know, we're committed to doing the right thing for the environment. We will continue to work with the agencies. And I guess, lastly, I'd really like to thank our emergency responders, who have really gone through some serious weather here in the last few days, and have kept up a great work path and got us where we are. So I guess I would open it up to any questions you may have at this point.
Yes, thanks for coming in and giving us an update on that. When I first heard about that, I wasn't sure, you know, if you're, someone might dump something in, down in the South Platte. But as far as the cleanup efforts, how far down the platte have you guys gone?
In terms of, in terms of the material that we saw, when I first arrived at the scene on Monday afternoon, we saw a very small stain going around the corner from Sand Creek into the platte. We believe that because we were witnessing this light sheen coming down, we believe that the pressure of the platte on Sand Creek was lapping the material up onto the shoreline, so we had a little patch of material. We've cleaned all of that up, and of course, we boomed off, and we've cleaned up through Sand Creek as well, right to the point of entry of the oil.
But how far down have you gone for cleanup? I mean, as far as testing the water and making sure, what's parts per billion, and...
As far as cleanup goes, the platte, we have done nothing on the platte other than that edge of, edge of the material. The one thing I would say, it's kind of important to note, because there are numbers that are floating out in the public and in the papers, the EPA were the ones who took the original samples, and they take the samples at the most, I guess, likely place to show a problem, which is, which is fine. I mean, I have no issue with that. But they're taking the samples in the worst possible place. That does not reflect the concentration of that material in the Sand Creek. Okay? So I think that has to be taken into context. The flow rate in the, in Sand Creek is 13 standard cubic feet per second. The flow rate in the platte is approximately 300 standard cubic feet per second. So there's a, from the samples that the EPA took, there's a huge dilution within Sand Creek, and then there's a further dilution of significance in the platte.
Now, what about, like, wildlife? Has any wildlife been affected?
No impact to wildlife, just for interest sake. We did find a dead fox when we were roaming the shores the first day. It looks like it got hit by a car and somehow managed to make its way down there. But we have preserved that. We've given it to Fish and Wildlife, and they're going to deal with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Gallagher and Ms. Burnett, thank you for coming and providing an update on the situation. You know, Commerce City has always had a great working relationship with SunCor. I don't think many other communities can say that, you know, the vice president of one of the largest companies and one of our largest employers comes and volunteers to hand out food at our community outreaches. I've always enjoyed the great relationship we have for you, with you, and, you know, I understand that problems arise, and they can't always be foretold, but I appreciate the efforts that you've made to do your due diligence to clean up the spill that has occurred. I did want to ask about, reading, reading the papers, and I appreciate your clarification on the EPA readings. You know, they had mentioned elevated levels of benzene. What exactly is, are the next procedural steps to decrease those elevated levels?
The first thing I would note, Dominic, is that the samples that we are taking take 72 hours to, so you take the sample, 72 hours later, you get a result. So some of these early results that went out were on day one or two of the event, where we're kind of setting up boom and optimizing that system. So we, from a visual perspective, we've been up and down that creek 24/7 ever since that started. It is improving dramatically every day we're out there, from a visual perspective. So any results we get are like three days late, and, you know, we have to deal with that. We fully expect that we're going to get the benzene levels down to drinking water quality by the time we're done here, so.
Hi, it's Leisha Burnett, Manager of Stakeholder Relations and Communications with SunCor. Just to add to that, I think it's important to note, too, you know, we, John's already mentioned it, but just to be a little bit more specific, we've been meeting every day since the event started with the emergency response managers from Environmental Protection Agency, as well as CDPHE. We have twice daily meetings. And I think what's encouraging from my perspective, and I think I'd like to offer it up to you, what I would submit is, you know, they, they have been very pleased with the progress. You know, that's what the heads of their emergency response management's saying. The work that we're doing with EPA, this is Unified Command, you know, they have skills and expertise. This is, this is a joint effort, and certainly the plans that we're putting forward to deal with the emergency, to deal with the response, are in full cooperation with EPA skill set, with Corps of Engineers, with CDPHE. So I think it's important to note that we're hearing from them that they're pleased with the progress, that our response effort and isolation effort that John described to you, as well as our thoughts now moving to the remediation effort, they're involved with those. They like them. You know, we're not going to do anything without checking with them and making sure that they're comfortable with it. So it is very much cooperative effort. We all need each other, and I think that's been an amazing thing to watch. And I guess I just wanted to offer that up, because I think, as John said, the results are a bit of a lag, but the work that we're doing, the EPA is seeing that is working. It's, it's, we're having progress, and the efforts are working.
And just a quick add on the add, the EPA stated yesterday that they did not believe there were any downstream water quality issues, so.
Great. And to further that, sorry, Dominic. Sorry, the EPA said that yesterday, and even today, they said, if there were to be a water quality issue, the EPA and the state would be, you know, taking steps to deal with that. Also, they said, too, and I think this is important to note, is that the intakes that different, you know, areas may have downstream, for different kinds of intakes, whether it be irrigation water, or drinking water, or whatever, the levels that they're seeing, and this is from the EPA, the level that they're seeing, those treatment facilities, whatever they are down, downstream, have capacity to deal with that. They are made to deal with the amounts of levels that they're seeing.
Thank you. And I'll just say that on top of our, our staff obviously keeping us well informed on this issue, I think it says a lot that you both would come here tonight and also make sure that we were informed. So I think it says a lot about the cooperative relationship that Commerce City and SunCor enjoy. So thank you.
Thanks, Dominic.
And we'll continue to do that, you know, over the next little while, while the response continues to go on. I'm at the EOC every day with John. We're working, you know, lots of different issues, and so the regular communications that have gone out from SunCor to our stakeholder group will continue to go out. And again, if you have any questions, you know how to reach me, and feel free to give a call.
All right. Mr. Bullock?
I just want to echo Mayor Pro Tims Moreno's comments, that I want to thank you, John, and you, Lisa, for coming in and giving us this update. And I know that the community appreciates it also, because most of the news that we've been getting has been coming from the media, and for you to come in and give us a personal update, we want to thank you a lot for that. Thank you.
Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to thank you also, Mr. Gallagher, for coming in tonight and giving us this update. For your concerns on your hazmat first responders, I was part of the Adams County person that put our team together, and I understand what they went through this weekend. It's extremely cold in them suits, and extremely hard to see, so that's a high risk, safety risk being out there in those kind of conditions, but kudos to your staff.
Thank you.
I'd just like to comment just briefly on that, so you're clear on how we manage that, so if you have any questions, how we manage safety when we're dealing with an event like this. Our staff, EPA staff, very, very coordinated effort in ensuring that where we have different zones of where people can be in the, in the area where we're doing the response, are monitored continually so that we know, so that they know, the levels of personal protective equipment that is required for that area, and that's done continuously. So know that our staff, very trained in dealing with that type of air monitoring, and EPA are working together to ensure that where those zones are, and they do, you know, move. I mean, obviously, the cold weather has helped us with air, with the air quality, but we do, we do take that very seriously, because we want people who are either working in the area, or today, we had people coming out with myself and John visiting the site, we had stakeholders out with us. We want everybody to be safe, and so we make sure that people have the appropriate safety equipment that they need and that they're trained.
Okay. I would like to thank both of you for coming in today. I got a chance to speak with John for quite a while today on the phone. My background before coming to the city was an EPA superfund site hazmat responder for Rydell Environmental. So I've had the opportunity to deal with like-type situations. You guys have handled it very professionally. We very highly respect your status with the community as a good corporate citizen. We know that you're taking the efforts that are necessary to get it cleaned up. I also went through the documents from the Colorado Department of Public Health on where you need to have your monitoring set up, by when you need to have your, the creek banks cleaned up. I asked John quite a bit of, quite a few questions today concerning Metro Wastewater's plant, as far as the fumes, the ventilation. He assured me those things were, were being handled. What I do want is, I want our, our community to know, and I want them to have the same kind of respect and, and trust in SunCor that we have sitting up here as a council, that that creek bed and the areas that were disturbed will be as good or better than they were before the situation happened. And I have that confidence. I want to instill that confidence into the community, because I know what kind of company you guys run over there. So I would appreciate it as things come forward, when you find out how long the leak's been taking place, if there's an underground plume that will have to be recovered, how large that plume is, how long the leak's been taking place. You know, those are some of the, some of the things that are of an interest to me, to know what we're looking at from a long-term cleanup process. In the short term, I believe you have, have resolved the, the problem with it continuing to enlarge, but just please keep us up to date. I talked to the city manager today concerning the leak, and he's assured me that they have staff that is working closely with SunCor to make sure we have information closely with the EPA and the Department of Health, so that they can bring back good information to this council. We're here to support both those agencies and SunCor as needed. So they're the ones doing the oversight, they're reporting to our staff. You guys are doing the cleanup, you're reporting to our staff. If there's any time that you need me for any type of, of press release to talk about our community and the involvement, I would be glad to do that. And I would like to ask our city manager to have his secretary set up a meeting, so that I can come down with him personally and have lunch with you, John and Lisa, or whoever you think it is best, to make sure that we keep our relationship where it needs to be, and that we have those conduits between us, so that we know what's going on at all times.
That's a very kind offer. I appreciate it very much. I would also, you know, like, you know, your questions are excellent questions in terms of where do we go from here? How do we, how do we find? We're kind of working that through at the moment, trying to understand where this plume has come through the system. A complete surprise to us. We want to know, we want to make sure that we don't have any ongoing issues, and you have my assurance that we will look after this to your satisfaction. And I do appreciate the city's support in particular, because it's really great to have city people that you can rely on and feel supported, because when you're, when you're in tough situations like this, and you're in front of the news media on a daily basis, it's a pretty lonely feeling, but having the support of the city members is very comforting. So thank you for that.
You bet. Thanks again for coming in. Lisa?
And just one last note, I'd just like to say that we did have Perry with us today on the site visit. It's been great having him at the regular meetings, and I let him know that if, you know, if at any time he needed anything, or was not getting the information he needed, we would make sure that we would, you know, rectify that. So it's been great having him out. He was out on the site visit with us today, and so it's, it's great having him there. I'd also just like to say, I really appreciate the phone calls I've received from city staff and, and city leaders. You know, the outpouring of support has been great. I mean, I would just say, you know, again, to echo John's earlier sentiment, it is disappointing for SunCor. It's not how we like to run our business, but it's great that we have the partnership here. I mean, our, our core value, you know, drives us. We care about the environment, and we won't stop caring about it.
Well, we appreciate that. Thanks again for coming in, and we'll be in constant touch.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that did not get a chance to sign up to speak, that would like to speak? Seeing none, thank you. We'll move forward on our agenda. Next item on the agenda is our public hearings. We're going to start with Resolution 2011-69. Mr. Gallagher? We'll move forward on our agenda. Next item on the agenda is our public hearings. We're going to start with Resolution 2011-69. Mr. Gallagher?
What we have here this evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, is actually, it'll expedite the proceeding here if we have a public hearing called to order. And that public hearing then will entail consideration of the Resolution 2011-69, and then be followed, assuming that 2011-69 is passed, then the consideration of the annexation ordinance 226-11, and then the ordinance involving the rezoning of the subject property, which would be Ordinance Z896-11. So at this time, Mr. Mayor, I'd ask that you'd call the public hearing to order, and then I'll proceed with testimony regarding the annexation, then to be followed by testimony regarding the zoning.
Thank you. The public hearing is now called to order.
So witness then that the city will call with regard to the annexation is Mr. Brian Garner, and I'll ask that you raise your right hand and please be sworn. You swear the evidence you're about to give and the cause now in hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Mr. Garner, would you state for the record your name and your relationship with the city?
Brian Garner, city planner, City of Commerce City.
And in your capacity as city planner, are you familiar with the petition for annexation that has been filed in this case?
Yes.
Are you also familiar with the property in question then that is the subject to this annexation proceeding?
Yes, sir.
Then I'm going to ask you some questions regarding the eligibility of this property for annexation, and if you will answer them for the benefit of the council and the audience, that would be required then.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Would you state for the record whether or not a plan for the area has been adopted by the City of Commerce City as required by the state statute?
Yes, there is.
Is the property in question, does the property in question have a not less than one-sixth of the perimeter of the property adjacent or abiding the existing city boundaries of the City of Commerce City?
Yes, it does.
Would you also state whether or not a community of interest exists with regard to the subject property and the City of Commerce City?
Yes, there is.
How about, is the property capable of, is it integrated or capable of being integrated as part of the City of Commerce City?
Yes.
Now, this particular petition that was filed for annexation, has that been signed by all of the property owners or on behalf of all the property owners of the subject property?
Yes, it has.
To your knowledge, have any annexation proceedings been commenced for annexation of all or part of this property by any other jurisdiction?
Not aware of any other annexation proceedings, no, sir.
There have been no other annexation proceedings?
Correct.
Besides the one that's pending before this, this body?
That's correct.
Does the proposed annexation result in the detachment of the subject property from any school district?
No, it does not.
Have the annexation petitions for this subject property been reviewed by you, and in your opinion, do they meet the requirements of law for annexation to the City of Commerce City?
Yes, it does.
And does the proposed annexation have the effect of extending the existing municipal boundary of Commerce City more than three miles in any one direction?
No, sir.
Has the entire width of any street or alley, public street or alley that's involved with this subject property been included in the annexation?
Yes.
In your opinion, is the property then eligible for annexation to the City of Commerce City?
Yes, sir.
Has any election been necessitated as a result of this annexation petition? Is there an election required in order to consummate this annexation?
No election is required.
To your knowledge, are there any additional terms or conditions to be imposed as part of this annexation, other than what will be considered by this city as part of its, this proceeding and the PUD zoning and the development agreement?
No additional terms or conditions.
Okay. I don't have any other questions regarding this, this annexation petition, and if there are any questions by any, any members of the council or the audience, then they should be submitted at this time.
Okay. Is there any one on this council who would like to ask any questions before moving forward? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of, or in opposition, or for information only concerning this annexation? Seeing none?
Thank you. Then in that event, Mr. Mayor, I'd ask that the proceeding then continue with the rezoning portion of the, the application. And then after the zoning information has been submitted, then the public hearing can be closed, and then the council will be asked to proceed with the appropriate votes.
Absolutely. Thank you, Bob.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I have a short presentation for you this evening. Case numbers AN2261 and Z8961. Location's northwest corner of Tower Road and East 81st Avenue, and of course, the applicant is requesting annexation with PUD zoning this evening. The site, as you know, is located over here on the east side of the Rocky Mountain National Wildlife Refuge, approximately between that and Denver International Airport. It's at the city's southeast gateway into the city along Tower Road. So that's the big picture map for you. Zooming in a little bit so you can get a better context of the, of the site, it's located just west of Tower Road, adjacent to Tower Road, and primarily along and north of East 81st Avenue. It's just north of the U.S. Airport Parking Facility that's existing, and just to the east over here is the Canopy Airport Parking Site. Of course, the landfill's up here to the northeast, and the land to the, the north and to the left, to the west, is undeveloped right now. So PUD zoning involves drafting a PUD zone document, which outlines all the, primarily all the uses. It also contemplates the, the overall project design and intent. The land use plan, land use schedule, development standards are all contained within that zone document. In this case, it's a six-page document. Subsequent to the Zone Doc approval, if that were to get approved tonight, the applicant would be working on design guidelines for the entire project. Taking a quick look at the city's comprehensive plan, this is kind of a snapshot of the general vicinity. The site is actually located right down here. It's outlined in red. You can see it there. It has the purple and the red. Now, those two colors indicate, the purple color is the DIA technology, land use designation from the comprehensive plan, and then that red zone is the commercial zone. That's generally a long tower for a little bit inwards from the Tower Road corridor. The DIA is, it's important to point this out to you, Denver International Airport's noise contour is this line, it's kind of this dashed line that runs from east to west here. That's the 60 LDN contour. As you can see, a majority of that site, about 80, 90% of that site is located within that, which of course means that the site really wouldn't be suitable for residential uses in that area. So in harmony with the comp plan, we don't have any residential uses lined up for this. It is DI technology, which is kind of light industrial overall and commercial. Take a look at the project referenced as the DIA Tech Center. Overall, it's about 200 acres. This shows the, the general land use plan. It's, has designated as parcels PA1, Planning Area 1, through PA9, Planning Area 9. So those are the nine planning areas in general. Again, the DIA Tech and the commercial are on there. We'll go through these one at a time here. So Planning Areas 1 through 5, those are all designated as the DIA technology, again in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan. Those would generally be light industrial uses, so that can include warehousing, research and development, technology, flexible uses, and they would also contain very limited outdoor storage in those zones. Planning Area 3, which is adjacent to East 81st Avenue right here, is designated to also contain possible airport parking use. And if anyone from council has additional questions about that, Brittany Moore Saunders is here, Economic Development Director, to, to answer any questions from council about that tonight. Planning Area 6, it's basically, it'll be an onsite detention, a landscape detention site within the project. Planning Areas 7 through 9, so these are located at the northwest corner of East 81st and Tower Roads. They have good access for retail uses, restaurants and office uses, so that's your commercial zone right here. And it also straddles the tributary that flows into Second Creek further to the north. We'll take a look at that next, too. As far as access and circulation, the city's Public Works Department, Planning Department, we've worked very closely with the applicant on access. There's of course existing signalized access at East 81st Avenue from Tower Road. That's right across from the Canopy Airport Parking Site. As proposed right now, and that would be approved by a traffic study, there would be a right-in, right-out movement just north of that existing full movement into the site, into the commercial area. And then another full movement would be proposed further north up here at the top of Planning Area 9, and that would be just south of the Second Creek floodplain area. Overall, a little bit of barriers, barriers within the site, and so the circulation plan actually works pretty well as it's been proposed to us here. Of course, utilizing East 81st Avenue all the way into the west, and then stubbing in some of these roadways for future development to the north, as shown here, of Road C between on either side of Planning Area 2, and then Road B would also extend to the north here and then connect with Road A, gets you back at the Tower Road. On the Second Creek floodplain, the site is adjacent to the floodplain. The entire floodplain would be, of course, it would be developed, it would be dedicated to the city at the time of first plat, and that's the entire thing, so no development would actually encroach within that Second Creek. It'd be left intact in its natural state. Again, the access road here just comes through the, just to the south of the Second Creek, and then you'll notice this bridge has a crossing of the tributary to Second Creek, and that tributary more or less carries runoff waters from this point south, and then that empties into Second Creek up here to the north. The tributary right now, it's, according to the applicant, would be left in its natural state as well, and would be continued to use for drainage from those points south, and then would be used as a possible amenity for development around that. Future trails are designated within Second Creek and also in the tributary as part of the trailways master plan. There would be a future trail through Second Creek. The dedication of Second Creek takes care of that. And then there would also be a 20-foot wide corridor eventually dedicated to see when that's requested by our Parks Department for another trail segment that would connect to the south right there. Overall, analysis is of the proposed annexation and zone this evening. Overall, it's consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. It's also consistent with the, the Economic Development Strategic Plan recently passed. The, the project will provide land uses for primary employment with this area, which is also designated on the city's comprehensive plan. As far as the, the possible parking lot location, staff feels that the particular location is just west of the tributary and Second Creek. It's, it's somewhat off the, the primary Tower Road corridor. It sits back a little ways, so we feel that that minimizes the visual impact. And then it would also help spur additional development along Tower Road, commercial nature. As I mentioned earlier, most of the property is located within that 60 DNL noise contour, so the land uses that are being proposed here would be consistent with that plan from Couple other points, the proposed plan provides good access circulation and buffering between those land uses, and reasonable densities would be accommodated by the plan as outlined in the zone, PUD zone document, and of course, maintaining those, those important trail connections of Second Creek and tributary. Lastly, I know oil and gas is on your mind with a few of the, the activities that have come to light here recently. Mineral interests do exist on this property. In light of some of these activities lately, staff has worked with the applicant and requested that some additional language is included within the PUD zone document that would mandate a conditional use permit would be obtained from city council prior to any new oil and gas activities on the site. There are none existing at this time, but since there are mineral interests on that property, it's likely that there may be a well down the road sometime. So if that activity were to come up, that would come before council for CUP. So based on the criteria that we just went over, this was presented to the Planning Commission on November 2nd this year. They voted to send the recommendation of approval to city council. And that, that concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions from council at this time.
Okay. Does council have any questions for the staff concerning the resolution? Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, I have a question. Now, I know on the, as far as the comp plan goes for that corridor for DIA, this is, this is something new than what was on that comp plan before. Is that correct?
The uses or, I'm sorry, which part?
As far as things were laid out, I know Chris Kramer is in the audience out there. Chris, can you come up here and speak on this, please? Could you bring up that first map you had there? You can dim the lights there so I can see that purple area. That dark, the dark purple area right there that was buffered over here by DIA, now is this something that's new as far as being part of this DIA?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Councilman Douglas, the map that you see in front of you here is a reflection of what the final adopted comprehensive future land use plan is. And so the purple color that is, are you talking about the area adjacent to DIA or over?
Just right to the left there, right across from the city, from the dump. The area that's where we annexed in, 81st and?
So the area that's annexed, yes, that was the, the color designation and the land use designation as laid out in the comprehensive plan throughout that process.
Okay.
So that is this, sort of the first and primary order of business that the staff does when analyzing these types of requests. The very first bit of, of analysis that we do is how does it match the comprehensive plan the city council has voted on and approved? And this one is absolutely consistent with that future land use plan.
Okay. Thanks for coming up here. And Brian, as far as the expansion on the road there, because right now, it's really congested in that area there. And I know you had added in the PA3 parking lot area there, because we already have competing parking lots as it is. Would that parking lot area be a, a new parking area? Is that just for the DIA itself, or is that something that's going to be paid parking?
Yes, Mayor and Councilman. To answer your question, this would be a new proposed parking lot. It's a possibility. I don't think it's a, it's an actuality at this time, but it's a, it's a possibility to be located on that parcel Planning Area 3 within the development. It's, it's proposed as a 25-acre lot. For comparison's sake, Canopy Airport Parking across the street is about 45 acres in size, so slightly smaller, but yes, it would be a new commercial airport parking facility.
Okay. And now what about expanding that road up there from, from 88th on down? Because it's a single lane, and as far as, I know it's going to be right in and right out, and the road access there is going to be the same road that the airport parking to the west is, right? As far as any of that intersection? Is that correct?
That's correct. I'm getting to that slide here. So your full movement on the north end of the Planning Area 9 parcel would be a new access into the site and then right in, right out. My understanding from the city's Public Works Department is that some, some safety improvements would, would probably be necessitated at this location for some of those movements?
Well, I would like, just, just, just by driving that way twice a day, and with the bad weather we've been having, it makes it really, really bad. we've been having, it makes it really, really bad, and really timely and costly as far as getting back and forth in area there. Is, on this plan here designated for the annexation, is there any road improvements as far as widening that section from 88th on down?
Developers would be required to pay road impact fees to help with Tower Road, but all the road improvements would be, that the developer would actually build, would be on the interior to the site, so building out the north side of east 81st Avenue and then these other roads that are shown on the map here.
I'd like to see something in there that would help, if this comes through, having that area widen from 88th all the way down, because it's just too congested to add that and to continue the same level of traffic with the single lane. I don't see that.
Understood. I know that's being contemplated with the entire widening of Tower Road corridor overall, so it's part of the bigger picture of the entire widening of the corridor.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Benson?
Yes, thanks, Brian, for your presentation. Can you go back to the oil and gas slide?
Yes, sir. Just a moment.
Okay, it says, "Staff requested the applicant include language in the PUD that any new well sites must obtain conditional use permit from the council." What about existing well sites? If there's new activity on existing well sites, which is what the current situation involves?
Yes, Councilman Benson, there are no existing well sites on the property right now, so it would only apply to any new activities on the site.
Okay, good. And I think this is the type of provision that we can put on any annexation that we do, which I think, well, it makes me think that we need to annex some of these little enclaves that we've got so we can put this kind of a provision in place so that new wells can't be drilled out there without getting the permission of the city council. But anyway, that's another issue. And I agree with Mr. Douglas that we ought to be able to require the developer to widen Tower Road at least in that area. And this is one way that we can get a large part of Tower Road, or at least from 88th through, or from 96 maybe down to 81st. That's about a mile and a half of Tower Road widened to four lanes. How much would that cost?
I think that would be better addressed by somebody from our Public Works Department. I think Greg Clements is here, if he would--
I think it's probably about $15 million, but is that possible for us to require that?
Mr. Benson, if I may, the city does require road improvement fees at the time of development, and those fees are usually held so that a large piece of the road can be built with multiple monies from different properties so that it's not a piecemeal type of development. And going into Mr. Douglas's request about developing that piece of widening for Tower Road, what you would be looking at is the widening, the width of that property by adding another lane, and when you take all that extra traffic that's coming down Tower Road, you divide it into two lanes. When it gets to the end of the property, it has to squeeze back down into one lane. What I would recommend and what I would ask of the staff is to look at some long turn lane type of opportunities for this property in the interim, rather than an additional through lane that would have to go back down to one lane. And I would also ask of our staff to please have the Public Works Department and the Engineering Department come get with this council, whether it's in a study session format or not, and give some outline of how those public dollars for those type of road improvements work, because I know there is a plan of effect to make it right, but in some of these cases you can make the road worse by going into two lanes and back into one, but I do think we do need to have significant turn lanes to access this property so that it doesn't have the negative impact it could have on Tower Road.
Now, I understand what you're saying, and can we put the money that would be required to convert that into four lanes into a reserve so that when other parts of this road are developed, or if the city wants to go out and add money to develop the width or the length of Tower Road, we'll have that money there, and if we've already made the improvement, if anybody else wants to improve along Tower Road, we charge them.
That's exactly how it works, Mr. Benson. As these properties develop along Tower Road, they'll pay that public improvement fee, it goes into a fund for Tower Road, and that's one less piece that we have to worry about financing when we don't have people that have participated at this level, so that when it comes time. Mr. City Manager, you want to add to that?
How much money would be put into that fund along with this development?
Do you have the numbers for the capital improvements for--
We can work on researching what the road impact fees would be for this particular project, but a broader comment about road impact fees, they contribute to financing a significant road improvement like Tower Road, but road impact fees alone aren't sufficient to finance the entire project. I believe our initial estimates to widen Tower Road all the way from 81st Avenue all the way up to 120th is something like $175 million. It's been a very high priority for the city, it's one of the key projects that we've talked about in terms of updating the city's long-range financial plan. We expect it to be a key topic of conversation within the Quality Community Stakeholder Committee that's just started meeting to start exploring what our priorities are from a community-wide standpoint and looking at alternatives for financing significant capital improvements over the next 10 or 20 years. Tower Road is certainly right at the top of that list, but because of the amount of money required to widen the road, it's a huge challenge.
See, I had understood that it was about maybe 12 to 15 million dollars a mile for a four-lane, not divided, but just a four-lane road, and you're talking about a five-mile stretch from 80th to 120th, 40 blocks, eight blocks to a mile. Why would it, I guess I don't understand why that would cost $175 million. It seems like it's about twice as much as it ought to cost. But maybe there are things like interchanges, there's, the 104th intersection, I think, is already built. You might need to put another intersection similar to that at 120th, but I'd like to see the cost breakdown on that, because I've been led to believe that it's about 12 to 15 million dollars a mile and not twice that much, which is what we're talking about here for five miles, that's $175 million. I just don't understand that. But what I'm trying to get at is, is what we're approving here tonight, is that going to approve something that's going to require any developer to put money into a road impact fund? Is what we're supposed to approve here tonight, is that going to require that?
We already require that for any new development to participate with that frontage.
All right. How much is going to be put into that as a result of this?
Depends on how much money you're taking. Do you have an estimated amount of what that front footage is and how much per front footage?
As we're continuing with the discussion this evening, we'll attempt to research--
Greg's coming forward. Do you have an idea, Greg, what that front footage is and what those costs for that improvements will be?
Mayor, members of council, road impact fees are calculated at the time of building permit, so it's based on the traffic generation of each user. So a fast food operation would have a road impact fee that would be attached to it, and a hotel would have a separate one that would be attached to the traffic generation. So those numbers cannot be determined at this time based on plan.
Until they have the users for those pieces and you know what the generation of traffic will be.
The safety improvements will include XL, DCL lanes and all those necessary to make sure that the traffic can move in and out of that development, but there needs to be a traffic study completed, and that's all part of the consideration.
Greg, since we have such a new council, is there any chance that we can, on a future study session, go over what road impact fees are and how they're put together in a general sense so that we all have a better idea?
Oh, certainly. We'd be glad to--
Appreciate that.
--present that information.
Okay. Mr. Benson, are you happy with that answer?
I'm not completely sure that I am, but I think that maybe this next presentation that Mr. Clements has agreed to might clarify that. I guess he's saying that the road impact fee is determined by the type of business that's going in there, which is based on the anticipated traffic. That seems to be a fair way to do it, so, yeah.
I believe we get every penny we can out of them when it comes to doing the road impact fees, probably more than they'd like to have to give. So I know our staff is right on top of ensuring that those pieces are taken care of. Mr. Turney?
Just to share, council, and this formula is set up by ordinance, so it's in place. It's not like on a case-by-case basis where you have to determine it each time, it's predetermined by ordinance, and any developer needs to comply then with that ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Benson, did you have anything further?
No, sir. Go ahead.
Mr. Moreno?
For those members that weren't present at the last strategic planning retreat, and Mr. Benson was out of town at that time, the council at that time did make a significant commitment to Tower Road, that we wanted to see that project take priority in our capital improvement plan and make sure that we complete Tower Road. The issue, designating Tower Road to get done is the easy part, the hard part is how do you fund it? Road impact fees certainly play a part, but they're not the entire solution to the equation. So while I appreciate the discussion on this item, you know, this is obviously something I think that can be talked about in a future study session item, you know, rather than during the annexation proceeding. Mr. Garner, I had a couple of questions about the presentation. You know, saying about Tower Road, and I certainly understand the concerns there with the additional traffic, I was wondering about the proposed timeline on the development, because I noticed two full access points will definitely have an effect, I believe, on traffic movement through Tower Road, so what is the timeline on this development, and will it affect that traffic on Tower Road?
Yes, Councilman. The timeline depends on the economy, so it's fully impacted by the economy right now. And I know that the applicant is going to speak to this a little bit, too, this evening as well with the presentation that they have, but as of today, there isn't anything lined up for development, so there's nothing that's going to be going on the ground tomorrow to answer your question. So it can be phased over in the next, you know, 10, 15 years, as far as that goes.
Will both of those full access points include signals or--
I believe the full movement to the north would be signalized, and then, of course, the one at 81st right now is signalized.
Great. Regarding the Second Creek floodplain and that piece of land being relinquished to the city for management by the Parks and Rec Department, where, and I haven't looked at the action plan, previous action plan lately, but where exactly would it connect to after it crosses into the floodplain?
On Second Creek, they would have to construct an underpass in conjunction with future Tower Road improvements, and then I believe the master plan shows extending further to the east from there. And then that tributary, there's another trail that's shown that drops south, and then, of course, you hit the city of Denver limits to the south of this property. And then, of course, to the north and west, it connects into the existing system.
Great. Thank you. Regarding the 25 acres that's reserved for a possible parking lot, will, is it left up to the developer about how much acreage is actually reserved for a parking lot?
According to the applicant's proposal, all 25 acres of parcel area three there, planning area three, would be designated for a possible parking facility.
And I saw in the report that staff had particular concerns about the southeast gateway into the city merely reflecting parking lots for the airport, and I understand that we constructed, or we encouraged the developer to place it in a way that will reduce that visibility for this parking lot that's proposed on this 25 acres. My question is, is that lack of visibility really in the best interest considering when people travel and may not see their options on Peña Boulevard heading to the airport?
Right. For the most part, you know, we're talking about 750 feet off of Tower Road. The Canopy project to the east across the street is about 500 feet back, so it's still visible, but you know, it's not right up on Tower, so all you see is a row of cars and just, and straight up parking. So that buffering just helps with the visual, kind of the aesthetic of the site, if you will, while preserving that land along Tower for, you know, those commercial and retail uses and a possible hotel use out there as well.
And do we imagine that there will be enough of a demand for parking to, that the site will be successful in being located so close to two other parking sites?
I can't speak for the demand side of it. I know the applicant can maybe be able to speak to that tonight, but judging by the facilities in the vicinity right now, they seem to be doing pretty well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McElDowney?
Thank you. The mayor pro temp touched on a portion of my comments regarding the discussion on Tower, but I do have a couple follow-on or complimentary questions, I guess, and some of them may be better held for the owner, but, I mean, relative to the setback, we're looking at a setback similar to the U.S. Airport Parking Site, just in rough terms. If I zoom in on that, the image, we're looking at a similar setback overall for the proposed parking here. And in either case, you've got a significant piece of land between either the existing or the proposed parking site and Tower that would, as we heard, contain other uses, including a potential hotel. So you're going to have a visual buffer between Tower and those parking uses over time. I think the other question that Mr. Moreno asked, and we can hold this one for the land owner, on the overall timeline, I think it's important to think about the questions that I'm hearing asked right now, but keep in mind the overall timeline within which those things that you are concerned with are going to transpire or develop. And so while we sit here today and talk about whether or not to approve this annexation and this development opportunity, the fact is that we're not going to see bricks and mortar flying tomorrow or cars coming in tomorrow, and so I think this is where we, as a council, have to be very savvy, as Mr. Moreno suggested, and keep Tower as a priority, so that we're keeping in mind the timing of when these users or these uses on these potentially annexed parcels will start to peak so that we have that development activity aligning with, hopefully, our expansion efforts along the Tower Corridor, and hopefully along the Peña Ramp someday as well. I mean, all of those things have to come together, so I think it's important for us to ask these questions, but just keep in mind the timing of when these users would develop. It's my understanding from the narrative presented by the Planning Commission that these are going to come in over a long period of time. So it's not like all of this is to be developed overnight, and it would be helpful, I guess, when we hear from the user what the expected progression of development on that site might be so that we can understand, I think, in better context, what impacts we need to be concerned with in the immediate term versus over the longer term. Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Well, just to go a little bit further about the demand for parking, I think Mr. McElDowney touched on this, once we get that off-ramp from southbound Tower on to westbound Peña, I think there will be more demand, because I talked to people who live in the south part of town, they don't want to park up there because they have to go all the way down to 56th Avenue to get onto Peña Boulevard to get back home. And I'm thinking that that off-ramp, it has so many attributes, that so many good things about it, we just have to get that done, and I'm thinking that we're going to be having some budget discussions at E470 on Thursday about that. So that's a very important thing, I think everybody in the city understands that, and I certainly understand that, and we're going to do whatever we can to get that done as soon as possible. Maybe we could go to USA Parking, which is in Adams County, and say, why don't you contribute a million dollars to get this ramp built? Well, you know, public-private financing. Well, you know, public-private financing certainly would benefit them. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, and I just wanted to say that when these projects come into Commerce City, yes, we have to plan for the future. We're looking at 15 and 20 years out and all. But this is, we have to initiate and make sure that for developers coming in, they have to know what our problems are. So just by bringing this in, it's great, but you also have to lay it out for the residents who are there now, because we do have a lot of traffic. And being that you guys don't see that on a day-to-day basis, it's a big deal. So when we do talk about this road impact fee later on, I would like to know how the trash dump site, what kind of road impact fees have been collected from them, both parking lots, what we get from South Adams, because all that's going to matter, because the on-ramp to Peña is going to, will be built before this site will be started. So we have to take that into consideration, because once that on-ramp comes on, we're going to have a lot more traffic. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Garner, one more question. I understand that the annexation, proposed annexation tonight is for a PUD designation, and that the developer will be required to submit a design plan. Will that design plan be required to be approved by the city council?
No, Councilman. The design guidelines that would accompany this project would be reviewed and approved administratively by staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no more questions from the council, we can get the lights back on. Well, ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to testify in favor of, or in opposition to, the annexation before us this evening. Seeing none? Mr. Gaylor?
And does the applicant have anything they wish to add?
Can we get the lights back on, so we can see? Oh, okay. I didn't know she was away from her desk. I can't see, it's dark. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Thompson, 5753 Shasta Circle, Littleton, Colorado. Mr. Mayor, council members, thanks for considering my proposal here for this development. I've been developing properties for Elsie Fulon White, Inc., and for myself, around Denver National Airport and onsite Denver National Airport for the past 15 years. I now have my own development company, and am targeting development around Denver National Airport. And this is a great site with the entry to DIA and the entry to Commerce City. And we'll talk a little later, I'll have Jeff Vogel, our land planner, give you guys an update of what our plan is, what the uses are, where we think the uses will be in the project. But basically, we have planned around 2 million square feet of individual buildings, ranging from restaurants, services, hotels, light industrial, that will target the Denver International Airport travelers and businesses, and then also residents of Commerce City who will be commuting by. We think that the total value, when the project's built over time, will be around $200 million. And we think that that'll be about 3,000 employees on just our 200 acres alone, when the project's totally built out. You know, DIA is the fifth busiest airport in the world, tenth, fifth busiest in the United States, tenth in the world. It's a huge economic generator, and I think this project puts Commerce City on the map as a airport gateway city, and will attract all sorts of users that, well, you're seeing in Aurora and Denver, and hopefully new ones to the area now. You know, we talked about marketing and absorption. We've, I've been involved in this area for a long time. There's a lot of users out there that haven't been accommodated with a good site like this site. And I think we're going to develop a really quality project here, both in the short term and the long term, that's going to generate jobs and bring new companies to the area. And we've been actively marketing it, but we can't really until we get it annexed and zoned and some of the initial improvements in. But we have contracted with two real estate brokerage firms, Cushman Wakefield, which is an international broker, and a local firm, Crosby Real Estate Group, for retail services. And we're just excited about this project. We're ready to get going. We would like to break ground middle part of 2012 and get some service users out there initially, and maybe a hotel or two. And we're just excited for the opportunity to annex into Commerce City.
Right.
I brought some of my team members here, Carolyn White from Brownstein Hyatt Farber Shrek, and Jeff Vogel is our lead land planner. And I think he has a brief presentation to give to you guys on what the uses are and where things are going to be. Thanks. And by all means, ask any questions, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Absolutely. And I think those questions for the applicant should probably be at the next stage after we hear their presentation. So, thank you, and we'll get to the questions here in a little while. So if you want to go ahead and start your presentation, we can move forward.
Major, City Council, good evening. My name is Jeff Vogel. I'm with Vogel &amp; Associates. We are land planners and landscape architects. We've had the privilege to work in Commerce City over the last 20 years, and the DIA environs, and have enjoyed working and working on a variety of things here in the city. We're very excited about this project, the DIA Tech Center, for several reasons. One, in that Mr. Thompson, as he mentioned, it's very unique in terms of its proximity to DIA. Unlike other business parks in the Denver Front Range, it's the closest piece of property to the Tower Road-Penya interchange. And therefore, we're able to create an employment center that can accommodate a variety of national and regional employment users, as well as retail, residential, and hospitality. So we're pretty excited about that. You know, obviously with DIA being here, but also the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge, and in the Second Creek Corridor that is located on the northeast side of the property. Those are important elements as well, in addition to be next to the DIA. But from a planning perspective, there's a lot of trends going on with creating employment centers and business parks. It's not like a traditional business park. I mean, the users want amenities, they want to be close to services. You know, years ago, when the Denver Tech Center, for example, was done, it was supposed to just solely be office, with no services. You know, amenities weren't necessarily an important factor. Today, it's changed. As employment users and even hospitality hotels look, they're looking close to services and to amenities, i.e. Second Creek and the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge. So, we're excited, just because of the proximity of this. This does represent one of the closest pieces of property to the interchange. Mr. Garner, I won't touch on this too much, but, you know, we did come up with a master plan that is consistent with the comprehensive plan in terms of the DIA technology zone and the commercial zone along Tower Road. We understand that this is the gateway to Commerce City, and so, as it's important to us, in terms of our edge, we know it's even more important to the city of Commerce City. It was talked, discussed yesterday, I mean, or previously, excuse me, about the trail connection in Second Creek. We have created the plan to make sure that we have plenty of connectivity to the trail system. And what you see here is the Second Creek Corridor that extends up to Reunion, past Frontera. And so, we would be tying into that. And you'll see that, that's a regional trail, but we're also going to tie into it on a local level, which I'll show in just a bit, along with the proposed Peña Boulevard Trail that's located to the west. As I, as discussed, there's really two land use classifications that we've incorporated into the master plan, and that is along Tower Road, the commercial land use classification. Again, our intent was to maximize the visibility of Tower Road and from the Peña Boulevard interchange for commercial and hospitality, and even some retail uses. Second Creek, obviously, is an important element, as I said, an organizing element. One of the things that, again, we felt pretty sacred about was the Second Creek Tributary. Although it's not in the FEMA flood plain, it's not even necessarily on the open space plan, we felt that it offered as a real amenity to DIA Tech Center, in terms of being able to locate offices, hotels, restaurants, and things like that along that corridor, as well as create a trail system. Again, when it comes to trends in business parks, employment centers, trails are a huge amenity. So this is great. This is unlike anything else, actually, in the airport gateway, if you will. So we feel that this is unique. West of the property, DIA technology classification, again, these include a variety of corporate campus users, light industrial, office flex, distribution, those type of uses. As Mr. Garner pointed out, you know, this planning area three is the only planning area that we could have airport parking. We've restricted it to this area for several reasons. One, we didn't think putting it along Tower Road was the highest and best use of that. And also, we felt that it was compatible, given the large existing parking facilities located here to the south. Again, that's approximately 60 acres, and they have about 8,000 parking spaces. We, this illustration is kind of an illustration of how things could or might lay out. And again, I think it's a lot more helpful to understand a little bit more of the vision beyond the bubbles. And basically, again, along Tower Road, we have the commercial subarea, which I'll talk about. We have the warehouse and distribution subarea, and then we have what we call the office flex and corporate campus subarea plan. As I discussed earlier, the intent is to maximize, again, the visibility, the access, and the convenience of Tower Road. And so what we see here along Tower, this is 81st and Tower Road, again, restaurant, retails, multi-tenant buildings, possibly a travel center, retail component, a variety of restaurants, and then, of course, hotels. Again, we think that the Second Creek Tributary, maintaining the integrity of that, sets up a wonderful opportunity to accommodate a variety of limited-service and full-service hotels. The office flex and distribution center component, what we see along the Second Creek Corridor is probably more office flex, or a corporate office along that edge. As we go to the west and more internal to the project, we see a possibility for distribution facilities, or warehouse, larger warehouse, probably similar to what you would see at the, like, Stapleton Business Park, something similar to that. And then, of course, the airport parking facility, again, it would probably be a covered canopy facility. And then, lastly, the DIA Tech Research Park. Again, given the proximity of this project, the DIA provides great opportunities in terms of accommodating just-in-time manufacturing, research and development. There's a trend still where a lot of corporate users would like to have all those in one campus, as opposed to being segregated, like some of them are today, where you'd have corporate office downtown, warehouse in East Denver, or something like that. There's a real opportunity here, given the size and the proximity of this, to put it all together. Furthermore, while there's, while we have the opportunity to accommodate larger corporate campus users, we also have these smaller sites, which we call incubator sites. And as green industry and some of these other industries evolve in Colorado, some of these smaller incubator sites are pretty attractive. So, you know, we have the ability, basically, to accommodate a variety of users. Again, a lot of the antiquated or older business parks, employment centers in Denver struggle with this right now. So we're able to have kind of a blank slate here and do it right. I wanted to touch base, touch back on, real quickly, as Mr. Garner said, we are going to, we're going to prepare design standards and guidelines for the community that include addressing site planning, architecture, landscape architecture, signage, lighting, et cetera. And those are something that we believe is very important. We want to have a very high-level fit and finish. We want to have continuity. Some of the principles that we've adopted for the park that's outlined in the PUD today, there's principles on sheet three that outline our intent when it comes to architecture and landscape and site planning, and also sustainable design. Those are in the PUD, and those actually set the basis for what we'll be using to create the design standards and guidelines. So with that, that concludes my presentation.
Well, thank you very much. Well, ask the council, is there any comments or questions of the applicant? Councilwoman Carson?
Mr. Vogel, thank you for that presentation. It was wonderful. And what you've put together there, I think, is a vision that all of us would have, we've been just itching to see come around. So, thank you very much. And I'm assuming that there is the need for that parking facility there, especially if we can draw the traffic in. I just parked in that facility over the holiday weekend, and I said, you know, what a shame if you come in in a late flight here, and you live in Colorado Springs, or wherever it is, that you couldn't just spend the night there and then drive home in the morning. So I do very much see a need for a hotel, even for those of us who live in Colorado.
Exactly. And that's a good point, because that does, again, differentiates this project, I think, from other, just airport parking or something, is that we're going to have a hotel there. So if you live in Wyoming, Nebraska, or even the western slope for that matter, you're coming to town, you can, you know, you have lodging, you do have restaurants, you do have some of those services that you can actually walk to as an alternative, is kind of our-
Yeah, I know. There's a lot of people that drive in from Nebraska, Kansas, Wyoming, such as you said, to use this airport. And depending on what time your flight gets in, constitutes whether you want to drive home that night. And so, we really would like to drive them into our city to park and spend the night and have dinner, so. And the canopy parking, I think, is a, for what it is, for being a parking facility, it is a very nice-looking facility. And I'm assuming that you will go along those lines to make something that appease you.
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's our intent.
Mr. McElDowney?
Just thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Vogel. Again, just to echo Councilwoman Carson's comments, I think just a lot of appeal in this proposed design. I think the thing that comes to mind as I look at the slide on screen now is just good balance. You touched on this in your narrative. It's not overly dense. You've got some nice buffers between the different buildings. I think of the corporate headquarters for the company that I worked for, sitting in Ashburn, Virginia. And it took place, I can remember getting on council four years ago and sort of likening what we face, potential-wise, here in the northern area of Commerce City, to what I recall of northern Virginia, where my corporate headquarters sits, up in the Dulles Airport area, and how the area around that was just wide open. Similar, you know, to Tower Road, there was a two-lane road that sort of paralleled a toll road that headed into DC. And my corporate parent built a very, very large campus. And I look at the potential to cite something like that here, or, to your point, a multi-building, conglomeration of buildings. And I think it's a really exciting space. Having that proximity to the airport for business travelers is huge, so your employees are not traipsing all the way across the city. I know that's a huge challenge, you know, 30, 40 miles across the Denver metro to get to an office and then race out to the airport. So I'm really intrigued to see how this takes shape. And driving that Tower Corridor home on a regular basis, you know, I love that, the tributary area there, and the Second Creek flood plain. And it's, it's sort of our own little postcard, as you're driving down Tower Road seasonally, those cottonwoods and the little creek. And if you can catch the sightlines just right, you don't see anything behind it but the refuge and the mountains, and it's an exceptional view. And the fact that you guys have chosen to preserve those areas that were outside of an area that you were really required to preserve, I really appreciate that attention to detail. And I think, you know, anyone staying in a hotel there would appreciate, or an office there, appreciate having access to those trails. So thank you very much. I think it's a well-considered design, and I'm excited to see what the potential develops into. So, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Vogel, I had a question about, one of the, you mentioned that the parking would likely be covered. And I believe in the slide, the photo shown, you had solar panels on the roof of that cover. Is that part of the design, or is that something that you would make a decision on later?
That's probably something we'll make a decision on later, but to be honest with you, that, yeah, 50%- you, that, yeah, 50% of the parking would be covered. And if we use the solar array or not, we're not definitive on that yet, but I would tell you that we're probably going to strongly encourage it. And some of the potential users we have talked to would, are also, you know, interested in that as well.
That's great. The only small critique I would have is, I believe, on the slide with your restaurants, I believe that one of the restaurants shown was a Ruby Tuesday. I know it would make my mom very happy if you would shoot for her Chili's. But that's the only critique I have. But I believe, I'm sure our economic development staff would be at your disposal in helping you make sure we attract those restaurants. So thanks for your presentation.
You bet. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vogel, for coming. I liked your presentation on this, and illustration is really great. Is this going to be like a lead green built, like silver or gold or platinum, as far as the building? Are we using more renewable energy sources?
Yes, I mean, we're going to, yeah, with the design standards and guidelines, there's going to be, they're going to be comprehensive in terms of site and landscape, lighting, architecture. Are we going to establish a minimum level in terms of gold or platinum? No, not at this time. But we're going to make sure that the standards, and like I said, are comprehensive. We're going to encourage users to look at the LEED certification program, but we're not going to require a minimum.
Okay, thanks.
And our, again, our standards and guidelines will be, there'll probably be a lot of standards that'll be requirements, not necessarily, you know, you should, but you shall.
Right. All right, thank you.
Well, I don't see any other council members, so I would like to thank you for coming in. The presentation was great. After years of being away from it, I still believe this fits in with the Eretropolis Plan with DIA and what they're looking at from a regional standpoint. And I think we have to be very conducive, working from a regional standpoint in this area. We do need the office, and we also need the commercial hotel opportunities as well. And, you know, if I was to sit down and tell you what I think the site would look like, I think you've done a great job of expressing what I would have envisioned after being in all those DIA-type meetings with the Eretropolis. So I really appreciate the open space. I think it will be a beautiful development, and I look forward to getting it started sooner than later.
Well, thank you very much. We're very excited.
Okay, Bob?
Hey, the city has nothing further to present, and if there are no further citizens that wish to present evidence, then we'd ask that the public hearing be closed, and then we can proceed with the appropriate adoption of ordinances and resolutions.
Okay, Mr. Moreno.
Just have one more question for Mr. Gardner. I noticed on the Planning Commission minutes that there was a dissenting vote in recommending this to the City Council. However, the minutes don't elaborate into the cause or reason for a dissenting vote. Do you have any insight on that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Moreno, I did not present to the Planning Commission that evening, so I can't speak to what the dissenting vote was. I know, I think it looks like Chris is coming up to speak to you about that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Moreno, there was a lot of discussion regarding the parking and the timing, really. And council may or may not be aware, previously, the first phase of the PUD process is a PUD concept schematic. Previously, that phase used to be heard by City Council. When the LDC was amended, that was changed so that concept schematics are now, concept schematics are now heard by the Planning Commission. And concept schematics are really just big picture. They're even more vague and a higher level of review than what you see here before you today. So the Planning Commission actually heard this case twice, and there was, through those two hearings, a lot of discussion about how can, how can we ensure that the parking lot isn't the only thing that's out there for five years, 10 years, 15 years? So it was really as a result of that, that the agreement that Mr. Garner referenced earlier came into being to help do what we could to make the site as ready as possible for that other development, so to minimize the likelihood that the parking lot was the only thing out there.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who would like to testify in favor of, in opposition to, or for information only before I close the public hearing? Seeing no one, the hearing is closed.
Then first action then for the City Council is to consider Resolution 2011-69.
Okay, what are the desires of council? Mr. Macaldoney?
Mr. Mayor, we'd move to approve Resolution 2011-69.
Mr. Bullock?
Second motion.
A motion is second, to consider Resolution 2011-69. You need a roll call vote or just a voice vote?
Title, Mr. Mayor, I'll read the title. Resolution making findings a fact by the City Council, the City of Commerce City and its conclusion relative to eligibility of annexation to the City of Commerce City of property located on the northwest corner of East, northwest corner of 81st Avenue and Tower Road, Commerce City, Colorado, in AN 226-11.
Thank you.
Voice vote's fine.
Voice vote. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Okay, next, we're going to handle the ordinance, AN 226-11, correct?
Right.
What are the desires of council? Mr. Moreno?
Move to approve ordinance AN-226-11.
Okay, Mr. Bullock?
Second motion.
Okay, a motion is second. Bob, go ahead with the title.
Title reads, "An Ordinance Approving and Accomplishing the Annexation of Contiguous Unincorporated Territory Described in Exhibit A Attached Here To Made a Part Hereof Located at Northwest Corner of 81st Avenue and Tower Road, Commerce City, Colorado."
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this one I have a roll call. Let the record reflect, the motion is approved. A hundred percent. Okay, next, we will move to ordinance.
Great. Now, before you do that, Mr. Mayor, you need to consider the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. And so that's a motion to approve or reject the findings and recommendation of the Planning Commission regarding this zoning.
Mr. Macaldoney?
Would move to approve the findings of the Planning Commission.
Okay, Mr. Benson?
Second that motion.
A motion is second, approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Now we can do the ordinance Z-896-11. Want to read the title of that one? Or, well, let me get a motion second first. Mr. Benson?
Yes, move for the approval of ordinance Z-896-11.
Okay, Mr. Bullock?
Second that motion.
A motion is second. Now, Mr. Attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "An Ordinance Approving the PUD Zone Document Attached Here To Is Exhibit A and Amending the Official Zoning Map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by Rezoning the PUD Zone District, the property located at the northwest corner of East 81st Avenue and Tower Road, Commerce City, Colorado, more particularly described in Exhibit A."
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record reflect that the motion is carried. Thank you for coming in this evening. Next item on the agenda, conditional use permit number CU-94-11. I will now open the public hearing and ask the staff to come forward and make their presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. The next case before you tonight is CU 94-11. The applicant, the Stout Street Foundation, is requesting to renew their conditional use permit to continue operation of a drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility on their site located at 7251 and 7201 East 49th Avenue.
Okay.
This is the subject site. It's currently zoned I1S. We've got I-270 to the north, as well as Sand Creek. We've got 49th Avenue to the south. Further south is Sap Brothers Truck Stop. And we have Pontiac Street to the west and some assorted industrial warehousing businesses, including a bakery. It's zoned industrial, well, it's designated industrial in the comprehensive. The Stout Street Foundation was originally granted a use-by-permit, not a conditional use permit, back in 2003, when the site was zoned C3. It was rezoned in 2005 from C3 to I1S to allow for outdoor storage with a use-by-permit. That use-by-permit was subsequently granted in 2006. And then the original use-by-permit for a drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility was renewed in 2006 as well. Now, the reason this is before council today is because the LDC back in 2009 revised the requirements for this type of facility. It now requires a conditional use permit instead of a use-by-permit. So it's here before you tonight for that conditional use permit, but this is actually the second time this facility will be renewed for their special use permit. So Stout Street has been in operation since 1972, and it's a self-supporting organization. The applicant states that there is a therapeutic community, and it's defined as a group of people who have gathered together in a community whose primary aim is recovery from drug addiction. There are two different categories of residents at Stout Street. Individuals who voluntarily seek therapy there, and then those who gain access through the judicial system. Applicants coming through the judicial system shall request treatment for their addiction in court, and if deemed appropriate, will be sentenced in accordance with the court. So here's the site plan for Stout Street. Fortunately, north is actually going to be to your right. So we've got Pontiac Street, Sand Creek, and 270, and then we have 49th Avenue. So this is the former site of the Economy Inn. It's an old hotel that was reused, and there's two buildings, main buildings on the site. There are approximately 110 residents at the facility and 142 rooms. Here's an aerial view of the site. The foundation currently has a staff of 18 full-time employees and one part-time employee. Additional supervision may come from senior residents, staff, or volunteers, and the center operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The foundation meets all of the standards laid out in Section 21-5238 of the Land Development Code for Group Homes, and the Planning Commission felt that Stout Street made substantial improvements to this site in the eight years in which they have operated at the facility. They've been good neighbors by volunteering for Sand Creek Trail cleanup and maintenance efforts, and that this is the appropriate reuse of an old hotel facility. Planning Commission also thought that this was still a good location for a drug and alcohol rehabilitation center within the city. So the Planning Commission recommends that council, or forwards council the request with a favorable recommendation subject to two conditions. Those conditions are that the permit is granted to the applicant only with no right of assignment, and that it will expire on January 1st, 2017. And as a note, with the adoption of the Land Development Code in 2009, these group homes are eligible for an automatic renewal of their permits should the city or any of their licensing agencies receive no negative complaints concerning its operation. So that means in 2017, the city would contact the licensing facilities, check our records to make sure we've received no complaints, and then automatically renew the permit without going before Planning Commission and City Council. And staff can answer any questions that council may have at this time.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions of the staff from the council? Mr. Moreno?
Ms. Axsmucker, I had a question about, according to the Land Development Code, facilities like these are now subject to a conditional use permit versus a use-by-permit, I believe what the term was. Can you explain the difference?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Moreno, the difference is a conditional use permit requires approval before Planning Commission and City Council. A use-by-permit just goes before the Board of Adjustment. The city felt that these facilities needed that additional step of approval and stepped it up to a Planning Commission, City Council approval.
That's great. That actually answered my next question, because I was wondering why, last time it was approved by the Board of Adjustment and this time the Planning Commission, so I appreciate that. In the report, it also stated that significant improvements have been made to this site by the Stout Street Foundation. Can you provide some examples of the improvements made?
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Moreno, I believe they've done some painting of the facility, rehabbed the overall structures, as well as some landscaping improvements along Pontiac and 49th Avenue, and maybe some paving as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes, did you say when this comes for approval, next time, it'll be an administrative approval instead of coming before council?
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Bullock, it would not come before council unless there was any complaints received.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moreno?
Just on that item, and not specifically in any way applicable to this applicant, but regarding the administrative approval in the future according to the Land Development Code, when I read it, I thought it was somewhat restrictive in the sense that it specifically references written complaints. Is there an ability for this council to maybe look at in the future state session to reference any complaint rather than simply written? I mean, I think most residents deliver their complaints by phone, not necessarily a letter.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Moreno, I understand your concern. I believe, should we receive any complaints over the phone, we would encourage people to submit those in writing to meet this criteria.
Okay. And regarding the Planning Commission report, I noticed that it was amended that instead of a seven-year term, it would now be a five-year for renewal. Can you explain why, what the reasoning was behind that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Moreno, there was some concern that there was a little police activity at the site, and they didn't want to have the expiration date be extended beyond what had been granted the last time.
Thank you.
Mr. Macaldoney?
Just a follow-up comment to Mr. Moreno's question about the written notice. We have a facility available now on the city website, Ask C3, and it's my understanding that a number of queries get logged in that system. Would a phone call from a citizen potentially result in a transaction being logged, and would that count as a written recording of that complaint? I just think that would be an alternative in my mind to having a citizen who's called in and then turn around and tell them that they have to submit something in writing if we could actually capture that transaction on their behalf.
Mr. Mayor, it would be important, I think, to record those conversations in our Ask C3 systems to be sure that we followed up on that concern that was raised, and by doing so, that would constitute a written record.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no more discussion by the council, I'll ask the applicant to come forward and add any additional information and/or comments to the council.
Mayor and City Council, my name is Tom Knighton. I'm the CEO and Executive Director of Stout Street Foundation. You know, we've been in the city now for eight years, and we've gotten to really like Commerce City, and we want to stay here. I don't feel like we've been a nuisance to anybody. We come into our communities, and we like to help out wherever we can because we have to live here. The calls for services from the Police Department are real minimal occasionally. We do have them. I'm not going to say we don't. We offer a safe environment for everybody at that location and for the community surrounding. We take that real serious. I have a staff member on-site 24 hours a day. So I mean, I'm open to any questions that you guys have.
Okay, Mr. Macaldoney?
That was from my prior comment.
Okay. Ms. Carson?
Hi, Mr. Knight. Do you offer all levels of drug rehabilitation?
We offer some outpatient, some therapeutic community, and 28-day inpatient.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Knight, I had a question. Ms. Axsmucker referenced that the two ways that people are, take advantage of the services at this facility, either by volunteering themselves, admitting themselves, or through the court system. But in that, it said that the actual person has to volunteer for it. Does that mean that a judge, for example, cannot sentence someone to rehabilitation at this facility?
No, that's not what that means. What it means is, basically, a judge is going to tell you... tell you, they'll put you on probation and you can go to Stout Street, or you can go to the penitentiary. And so that's how they say they're volunteering. We don't have any locks on the door except to keep people from coming in, you know. I mean, the doors are open 24 hours a day except for at night, you know. So, everybody knows it. It's definitely a voluntary program. We don't try and keep anybody. We don't restrain anybody, put our hands on anybody. If they want to be there, they stay. If not, we make sure that we get them out of the community and back to the community that they came from.
Thank you.
Seeing no more questions.
But if they don't behave themselves, the judge could sentence them to prison.
That is correct. Yeah, if they don't behave themselves and they decide to walk away and we notify whatever judicial branch sent them to us, then they can be sentenced to prison. So, I mean, there is that.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion by the council, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of, in opposition to, or for information only? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Now, what are the desires of council?
Findings and recommendations of Planning Commission first.
Okay. Mr. McElhany?
That would be my motion. Move to accept the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission.
Mr. Moreno?
Second the motion.
Your motion is second to approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Mr. Moreno?
Move approval of ordinance CU-94-11.
Mr. McElhany?
Second.
Your motion is second to approve the conditional use permit. Mr. Attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, "Conditional Use Permit for a Drug and Alcohol Rehabilitation Group Home."
Okay. Last but not least, roll call vote. Okay, let the record show that the motion is approved. Next item on the agenda will be our resolutions. Following two resolutions authorized, two intergovernmental agreements, one for juvenile assessment services and the other for animal shelter and adoption services. Does the staff wish to address the council regarding either of these resolutions? Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, the two resolutions this evening will be very quick. They're our annual review and renew. Our 2012 renewal of the multi-juvenile IGA with the LINK. The participating agencies are Thornton, Brighton, Northland, Westminster, Adams County Sheriff's Office, and Commerce City. Approval of this IGA is required for Commerce City to utilize the services that are offered by the LINK. And currently, there are no options for us for these services. The primary service offered by the LINK is the detention screening. All youth charged in the 17th Judicial District must be screened before being admitted to the Adams County Youth Center. They provide that screening service for us. Additionally, they provide a variety of intervention and prevention services for at-risk youth in our community and their families throughout Adams County. These services are greatly assist our officers that are on the street on a daily basis. It's very difficult when you're dealing with youth. The funding for our share has been approved in the 2012 and 2013 Police Department budget in the amount of $42,065. That's actually a reduction of about $5,000 from last year, and that was based on the level of our percentage of service that we received from them. It's just a matter of crime being reduced in the city. And the staff and Commerce City Police Department is recommending the approval of this IGA.
Okay. Is there any questions of the council for the staff concerning the two resolutions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Baker. What are the desires? Let me do this. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to these resolutions? Seeing no one, thank you, Mr. Baker.
Okay, we have one.
You want to do the next one?
You want to continue with that one? Okay. The second resolution, Mr. Mayor, sorry, is Resolution 2011-75. That's the 2,000 renewal of our IGA with the Adams County Animal Shelter and Adoption Center services. The IGA is required for Commerce City Police Department to continue to utilize the services offered by the Adams County Animal Shelter. Currently, there are no cost-effective alternatives for us. Every year, we do review the costs and look for alternatives, but Adams County is the best alternative for us. Adams County Animal Shelter and the Adoption Center provides shelter, care, and adoption services for dogs, cats, and other small creatures impounded because of violation of municipal ordinance. The facility also provides euthanasia or proper disposal of animals when necessary. This IGA for 2012 only has two minor changes from our 2011 IGA, and it's a matter of the facility limitations at the Adams County Shelter. They do not accept foul or other food-producing animals. And they also have increased the cost to us when we bring in pregnant female cats or dogs that end up with a litter while they're in, being cared for at the facility. Neither one of these changes caused us any change to our operation. And the funding for the services outlined in this IGA have been included and approved in the 2012-2013 Police Department budget in the amount of $119,000 annually. This is no change from the cost from 2011. And we are recommending to approve this IGA.
Okay, thank you. Any discussions on the animal shelter? Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Baker, regarding when animals are dropped off at the facility, do you have any idea of what the time period is between when they're dropped off and when they're ultimately put down if necessary?
They do have a policy over there that's included within the IGA related to that, and it's dependent on the well-being of the animal. They do try very hard because it is an adoption center, you know, online. They have quite a few forms of communication with the public to seek adoption for animals. I don't know exactly how long that period is, but it is outlined in the agreement.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, thank you, Mr. Baker. Is there anyone in the audience that has any comments on this resolution? Seeing none, let's, yes, ma'am?
Mr. Baker, when I was reading through that packet, I didn't see and I don't know. Is there an online login? Because I know when people's animals are picked up, typically I think they call the shelter and give a description. Is there any way online that that is 24 hours?
I believe there is, and they also take photographs of the animal, for lost and stray animals. So you can access there online and look at the animals to see.
So after hours, a family could see that they're...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no one else. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Now...
I can answer one question that was asked, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like. The IGA does provide for the animal being impounded for five business days. However, there's some room that if there's some interest in adoption, then that can be extended.
Okay. I'll now entertain a motion. What are the desires of council? Mr. Bullock? Let's take Resolution 2011-74 first.
Move to approve Resolution 2011-74.
Okay. Councilman McElhany?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Please read the title.
Title reads, "Resolution Authorizing Intergovernmental Agreement Regarding Provision and Funding of Juvenile Assessment Services by the LINK, 2011-74."
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Now, let's handle 2011-75. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve Resolution 2011-75. Counsel is seated.
Okay, Mr. Douglas?
Second.
Your motion is second. Mr. Attorney?
Title reads, "Resolution Authorizing Intergovernmental Agreement Regarding Animal Shelter and Adoption Center Services."
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That resolution also has passed. Now, we have an ordinance on the first reading, Ordinance 1877. You going to present this one as well, Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go right ahead.
Mr. Mayor, member of council, tonight, we have an amendment to our current red light ordinance, which is Ordinance 1877, amending Section 1123 (7) of the Commerce City Municipal Court regarding the red light camera. This presentation was prepared by Officer Linessa Belevins. As you know, the Commerce City Police Department by budget has 93 and a half-commissioned officer. Officer Belevins represents that half position. She's a part-time employee that manages the red light program for us and reviews all of the violations and takes care of this program. The red light program, as you remember, it was, we went live with the cameras in August of 2010, and for 30 days, we issued warning citations to the community. And we also had an education program where we tried to educate the community as much as we could on the red light program. From the very beginning, our program was intended to reduce crashes and monitor the red light violations at that intersection. Of all the intersections in the Denver metro area, 60th and 85th certainly warrants this red light program and has been successful for us. The total number of citations that have been issued since we went live with actual citations in September 2010 to September 2011 was 10,288. And of those citations, 7,900 have been paid, which is a 78% pay rate. Those remaining violations are still unresolved and they are either in collections or pending resolution. One of the things, just real quickly, the statistics from the red light camera, you know, from August 1, 2009 to August, or July of 2010, prior to the camera being installed, we monitored the accidents and we had about 39 accidents at that intersection in that period of time. Accidents at that intersection are usually heavy damage and most often injury accidents just because of the speeds and the nature of the intersection. After installing the camera in August, and the statistics showed that the accidents accomplished what we were trying to accomplish, and that's reduced the crashes. As you can see, they reduced it by about 15% overall number there. Critics of the red light program often will tell you that red light cameras have a tendency to increase the rear-end accidents because people have a tendency, when they see the cameras or they know the cameras are there, that they'll stop earlier than they need to for the lights. But our statistics have shown that actually the rear-end collisions at that location have been reduced. And so that criticism of the red light camera didn't show here at our intersection during that period of time. I do have a couple. I want to just take the opportunity to show you a couple of videos from the cameras. And then before she starts this video, if you notice the blue van in the lower right-hand corner, that van has not stopped at the crossing line. We do not serve summonses for people that don't make the stop prior to that line there. You might have seen some publicity in Denver where they were serving summonses. In this case, this van would have gotten a summons in certain other cities. But Linessa reviews all of these violations, and we do not serve the notice of violation for these types of violations. We're looking for violations that are clearly violations and a danger to the community, to the traveling community. This is 60th and 85. As you can see, the red, the light is green right now at this point, or it's red at this point for northbound, if you could run that for us, southbound turn lane to eastbound 60th is getting ready to go. This semi clearly runs the light there, and it's a near-miss accident. You know, and police officers are just simply, it's not a safe location, if you can run that again, Linessa. It's just not a safe location to have a police officer on a motorcycle or in a car to try to catch these violations. That truck driver was found and he was served a notice of violation. Luckily, neither one of those cars were hit at that point. I have one more quick example of the videos. And when somebody does get a violation and they come to see Officer Belevins, if they want to contest the violation, you know, they, we have the ability to show them the video, which clearly shows their photograph from different angles, their vehicle or their license plate, and we can show them these videos. Now, the videos that Linessa can show them has the timestamps when the light turned red so that you can see exactly how much time has transpired from the time the light turned red until this vehicle entered the intersection. This is the same location, similar, as you can see, the truck northbound is stopped for the red light. The light has changed. The traffic has gotten through 60th, getting ready for a turn. Southbound 85, again, to eastbound 60th. That again is a near-miss. The truck that's parked right there, as you can see, he crossed the line, but we don't serve that violation. The driver of that vehicle was served a citation. You know, one of the things that is, as with any enforcement, whether it's a police officer, you know, on a motorcycle or in a car running radar or a traffic red light camera, they do, enforcement of any kind, you know, generates fines and fees, if you can click over to that next slide, Linessa. Since the camera went live in September, it's generated $240,000. That's excluding all of the expenses and Linessa's salary in revenue. And again, that's not our intent, but it is, it's just a matter of fact that any enforcement action relates to revenues. One of the things that we are looking at is the feasibility of 56th and 85 and 120th and 85. The analysis in this crash status, statistics, and the number of violations for both of those intersections, you know, may or may not warrant, but we are looking at the possibility of cameras at those locations. The ordinance, what we're really here for is to change the language on the ordinance. And this, the four changes that we're going to present tonight in this ordinance are a matter of house cleaning, and really it's cleaning up related to state law and our current practices. This first piece, the ordinance amendment provides clarification for more detail in certain provisions. Oh, I'm sorry. It allows, I can't see here very well. My eyes are not as good as they used to be. I apologize. Thank you. The language brings this section into compliance with current practice and case law, and it specifically states that it's adequate to serve notice of violation by U.S. mail. There was some controversy about service by U.S. mail, and that service of a notice of violation is appropriate by U.S. mail, and this cleans up that piece of the amendment. The next piece is the section, this subsection provides clear direction and outlines the actions the violator shall take once they are served with a notice. That language, the third component allows the option of serving a violator that fails to take one of the actions in Section C with a summons and complaint to appear in court. And the final amendment allows for referring the matter to collections by whatever means are available to the city when a violator that has been served with a notice of violation and fails to take one of the actions in Section E, which consists of remedies established in the chapter. So if they don't pay, you know, we can refer to collections. If you have any specific questions related to the operation of the summonses, I'd certainly be able to answer those for you, or Officer Belevins could.
Okay. Councilwoman Carson?
I think we must have a guardian angel over that intersection because if my notes are correct, did you say that from September 2010 till September 2011, there were 10,288 citations?
Yes, notice of citations.
So that's 10,000 and some drivers running that red light. And we had only had 39 accidents in the year prior to that, is that?
Yes. Yes.
Well, Mr. Benson said that was some good... Well, Mr. Benson said that was some good driving that he witnessed there, so maybe that is where, what it is, is we have some good drivers. I am not a person who believes that red light cameras should ever be used to generate revenue to a city. They should always be used as a safety precaution. It's hard watching those videos, even when you, even when I knew what was coming, it was still hard to watch that. So I think it's doing a very good job. Hopefully, that maybe people start to learn that cameras there, and that in itself makes them stop, because that semi going through there is gut-wrenching.
Okay, Mr. Moreno?
Commander Baker, regarding the revenue protection, or the revenue what we brought in, two hundred and forty thousand dollars, do you have a number of what the cost was for the maintenance of the red light cameras and installation as well?
I have, I do not have that information with me. American Traffic Systems, the company that we contract with, provides us all of that information, and we can certainly make it available. Linessa may be able to answer a little further.
Yeah, the total was approximately four hundred and some thousand dollars that we had, and so that was the revenue. That was after we'd paid American Traffic Solutions and after my salary had been paid and all costs related to the cameras had been paid.
Thank you. And then regarding the notification, the service of violation, the amendment states that we can now, we will now be able to send those by first-class mail. How were we doing it previously?
It has always been via first-class mail. We were just bringing the, bringing it into compliance with what other city ordinances have, how everything else is already stated. So we're just bringing this particular one into compliance, though we've always done it that way.
Okay, so we weren't doing certified mail, or anything like that?
No.
And what is the cost of a red light citation?
Seventy-five dollars, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Macaldonie?
Thank you very much for the update. I have vivid memories of the discussions, the heated discussions, I think, at moments when we first considered the proposal to bring forward the pilot with these cameras at that intersection. And I think the numbers that we heard are evidence of the value of that. I think, you know, every time I drive through that intersection, I take note of the cameras around and watch, and, you know, I think any of us have driven through that intersection and watched somebody blow through the red light or stop well into the intersection, and it's just, again, it's amazing that we don't have more. I think it'll be interesting to see what the data shows of the other two intersections that you brought forth. I think those are also, as Councilwoman Carson knows, who lives right by the Highway Eighty-Five and Hundred and Twentieth intersection, that's a challenging intersection for different reasons. And so, you know, folks who aren't paying attention and don't pay attention to the light, it's just, again, accidents waiting to happen. So thank you for the effort. I guess the one question on revenue versus cost of the operation with the referral to collections, does that remainder include the cost of collections, or is that something that would have to come out of that other end?
The collections agency that we utilize is the same collection agency that the city utilizes, which is Integral Recoveries, and they take their cost, they charge the customer or the violator the seventy-five dollars, and then they add on their fee, and they collect the entire amount and send us our portion of it, which is the seventy-five dollar fee, in a bulk check on a regular basis.
Perfect. Thank you for that clarification. That's all. Thank you.
Councilman Teeter?
Commander Baker, from the EMS side and the fire side, we agree a hundred percent that that has helped that intersection a whole lot. And from a person that uses that intersection all the time, it's obvious that people are slowing down and watching what they're doing now.
Mr. Bullock?
Is that, I was at the intersection yesterday, and I watched two people run the light, and the cameras didn't flash. Are the cameras operable right now?
Yes, we have, yeah, we have not received any notification from our company that they would not be operable.
Okay, because I watched the guy in front of me run the light and no flash, and I was thinking, okay. And then somebody going in the other direction when the next set of lights went, did the same thing, and I didn't see a flash there either, and I was thinking, maybe we have suspended it, but they are operable.
Yes, yes, sir.
We are notified if the system goes down for any reason, they notify us right away. Occasionally, trucks will side-swipe the cameras, but put them down for a while, but it, they notify us immediately when that occurs.
My wife in Denver got a ticket for crossing over the line, and she went to fight it and say that she didn't run the light, and they told her, well, if you're in this part of the intersection, that is considered running the light. So I'm kind of glad we aren't doing that, because I think it's, it was right over by Stapleton, and it was really kind of, I guess, it's, to me, it was ticky-tacky that you are stopped, and they are still ticketing you for not running it, but sitting a little bit too far into the crosswalk.
By the letter of the law, if the light turns red and you stop after that line, it is a violation, but that is not our intent, and it's not the spirit of the law. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Denson?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. What would be the difference between Hundred and Twentieth and Highway Eighty-Five and Hundred and Fourth? I notice you don't have Hundred and Fourth on there. You have Hundred and Twentieth. Why would Hundred and Twentieth?
A hundred, it requires approval by CDOT, and with the reconfiguration of Hundred and Fourth, the argument would be is that because of the widening and the reconfiguration of the intersection, it has made it a safer intersection. The intersection as it was previously was not a safe intersection, but with the reconfiguration and the redesign it, it is a safer intersection, and it would be, we need to monitor it for a period of time to determine if a red light camera would be justified there.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Moreno?
You mentioned the collections agency. What's, what is the additional cost that the collection agency imposes to the violator?
I'm sorry, the additional fee, I believe, is eighteen dollars, eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents. It's a percentage.
Okay. And is there the ability for the violator to pay the fine online, or do they have to come here?
Yes, they can pay it online. They can pay it in person here at the Commerce City Police Department, or they can send it in by mail.
Thank you. I am glad I'm not knowledgeable about this process.
That's good.
Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Commander Baker. Hey, I had a question about when you guys put these red lights in. Was there ever a timing adjustment as far as the lights, or is everything all still the same?
Related to the timing of the lights?
Right.
It remained the same as it was previously. There was no change in the timing of the lights.
And then I, I'm trying to think. I know down in the intersection, down there where you have it, is there, how far away is that post before the intersection, that there's a red light camera district?
Are you asking where the notice is?
Yeah.
That there are cameras, that there are cameras ahead?
Yeah.
I'm not sure. It is, it is set in state law as to how far back it is, and we are in compliance with that.
Okay, size and everything?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what the yardage is, but it's a particular set yardage that's required by state law, and we are in compliance with that.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Bullock?
There's no points assessed against a license on these tickets, are there?
That is correct. There are no points assessed.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no one else, I would like to compliment you for your presentation. I also would like to ask you, you know, it's two years ago this February that I had a semi run over me in that exact intersection. And we're still not through the litigation process with the self-insured carrier. And that brought to mind, watching these videos, if someone was injured in an incident in that intersection, and it was on video, or there were pictures taken of it, would they have access to be able to use that to make their case as part of their litigation?
Yes, our traffic investigators, on several occasions, have gotten copies of the tape as evidence and booked it in as evidence in traffic investigations. Also, we've used it to identify vehicles that, you know, in, as an example, you have a robbery that occurs, it's somewhere in that vicinity. We can watch the tape during that period of time, if we have a vehicle description, and look for a vehicle, and then possibly obtain additional evidence. So those tapes are available for us in accident investigation and criminal investigation.
Yeah, I think that's important, because that makes that a multiple use. And when it comes to the revenue side of it, I also am very much that community, or community development, what do you guys call it now, ComDev, the? No, 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 no. The ones that take care of the weeds.
Oh.
Neighborhood Services. Yeah, it's, the name's changed about fifty times. Neighborhood Services and Police Departments should be compliance-driven departments rather than revenue-generating departments by nature. And I just felt it necessary that I put my two cents in on that. So thank you very much for coming forward with this, and we'll take it under advisement. Yeah, I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to say anything concerning this ordinance before we move forward. Seeing no one, what are the desires of the council?
Mr. Bullock? Move to approve Ordinance 1877.
Second.
A motion and a second to introduce Ordinance 1877. We need a roll call vote on this one. Title, Mr. Mayor? Title.
Title reads, "An Ordinance Amending Section 11-23 (7) of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code Regarding Use of Red Light Cameras."
Okay, thank you. Now I'll ask for that roll call vote. Let the record show that the ordinance has been introduced. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance 1879. The staff want to address the council on this ordinance.
I believe Mike Brown is here to present, if you'd like a presentation.
What are the desires of the council? Would you like a presentation on the ordinance?
I don't need one. I, do you need?
Consensus? No? No? I think we'll pass then. I'll ask the council for their desires. Mr. Macaldonie?
Would move to introduce Ordinance 1879 on first reading.
Thank you. Mr. Moreno?
Second the motion.
Great. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak concerning this ordinance? Seeing none, Mr. Turney, read the title.
Title reads, "An Ordinance Amending the 2012 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the Recognition of the Bank 2010 and 2011 Adams County Community Development Block Grants in the Amount of $344,866 to be Used for the Parking Lot Renovation at Fairfax Park and the Authorization of the Expenditure thereof."
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that the ordinance has been introduced on first reading. Mr. Bullock, you had a comment?
Yes, I see Mr. Brown sitting out in the audience, and seeing how he sat through this, much of the council meeting, I think he should get up and at least say something about this ordinance. I'm just joking, Mike.
They're like attorneys. If they don't talk, we don't have to pay them, right? Great. Next item is to go into an executive session. I'll need a motion and a second. Discussion and a voice vote. That motion must include the language in the agenda. What are the desires of council? Mr. Moreno?
Move to enter executive session for the purpose of, one, determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations concerning an economic development opportunity in the City of Commerce City pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 (4) (E), and, two, to receive legal advice concerning open records issues pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 (4) (B).
Thank you. Mr. Macaldonie, I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's approved. We will be back in a short timeframe to handle
Oh, where's Bob?
Back there, Doctor.
So, let me ask you one, okay? We're talking about...
We're talking about like, like on the home of our...
Okay, okay, instead of decorating the trees, as you were saying.
Why is it that it's always below zero?
It's below zero.
Let's go ahead and get the meeting back in order so that we can relieve our citizens of having to stay any longer than they have to. Next, there's administrative business. Any of the council members have anything to talk about? Mr. Mackel Downey?
Thank you. I had two items for consideration for council. One, we, Mr. Douglas and I attended another community meeting this weekend and we had the support of Mr. McBroom and Mr. Aker at that, at that meeting on the subject of fracking. And during that meeting, we received a status report on the items that are being looked into by staff, and I believe we'll at least get a brief update from, from staff on that during their update. But one of the things that has come up, and I sent an article to, to council on an item that is being explored in Colorado Springs, and it's come to my attention through another item passed to me through some citizens that, in September, El Paso County Commissioners passed a four-month suspension on issuing oil and gas permits to give the county time to create local land use regulations and further explore drilling and their impacts on their community. And it looks like Douglas County recently extended their comment period on a proposed set of rules into December to provide more time for public input. And what I would ask that we get support from council for is a formal action by staff to put forward a moratorium. And I would suggest six months as a starting window. I know we can't put an indefinite window on this, but I think to formally frame the exploratory period, that the special council that we've brought online to explore our existing rules and explore any need for additional rulemaking that we might need to consider relative to oil and gas in the city. And with council's support, I would move that we direct staff to, to take that action. And then I have a second one, once we have discussion on that.
Anyone out there for a second?
I will second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Mr. Gaylor?
Yeah, I would support that, recommend supporting that request to give council an update. I have proceeded to get a copy of the Colorado Springs moratorium ordinance. It was an emergency ordinance. So pending the action of council this evening, I'm prepared to move forward with a proposed emergency ordinance that would address the Commerce City situation, which we really have some unique characteristics because of our proximity to the contaminated plume on the Rocky Mountain Arsenal Wildlife Refuge. And I've gotten some research that I've done and gathered documents from other sources that will assist me in this regard, because we're not only talking about, as Colorado Springs was, regulations dealing with new wells, but we're talking about any oil and gas operation that would include use of existing wells for fracking purposes. So I would support or recommend supporting that, that motion, and I'll bring it back if, if you approve it. I would say, depending on the agenda-setting committee, but this is something that we should not delay on. I would say we could have it for you for the December 19th meeting if you approve it tonight.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Mr. Benson?
Not on that issue.
Okay, well, then, let's wait. Let's take care of this issue first. Mr. Moreno?
Mr. Gaylor, in your legal opinion, do you feel that a six-month moratorium is best suited?
I think that the six-month moratorium is the, the safe harbor area. If we go beyond that, then you run the risk of, is it a valid moratorium? So if we impose a six-month moratorium, there's nothing that says we can't come back and readdress and extend it if we have justification for doing that. But the real purpose for the moratorium is to come back to you with any required amendments to our land development code, and six months should be adequate for us to do that.
And I'm assuming that this moratorium would obviously apply only to wells within Commerce City's limits?
That's correct, because that's all we have jurisdiction of. We could not legally extend it beyond that.
And would it also include active as well as inactive wells, or?
And that was my point, yes, exactly. And that's where the Colorado Springs one is a little bit, or quite a bit different than what we're talking about, because that's only half the issue. If, if we only extended it to brand-new wells, that, that wouldn't address our problem, because we have quite a number of inactive wells that are subject to activation out there, and we would want this new set of regulations to apply to both types of operations.
Does staff currently have information on how many active wells we do have in the city that are currently being fracked?
I can't answer that. Maybe Mr. McBroom can.
I'm not aware of any other fracking operations occurring at existing well sites in Commerce City.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Mackel Downey?
Just a piggyback question. This is actually part of my second item, and I'll just add this here to speak to Mr. Moreno's comment on the fact that the motion on the floor is really about Commerce City specifically. What I was going to suggest as a second motion or consensus would be that we ask council to support drafting a letter to our county commissioners and seeking that they put forward a moratorium at minimum on unincorporated areas within our growth boundary that would help butt up with a moratorium that we would put into place to help ensure that any drilling operations in unincorporated Adams County but within our growth boundary would, would have that same protection in, in the spirit of, as Mr. Gaylor put it, the proximity to the, to the refuge. So I don't know if, I don't know where council feels on that. I mean, ideally, I would love to say we put forth a broad moratorium and ask Adams County to reconsider its rules and any additional need for rulemaking. But at minimum, I would ask that we ask them to at least put forward a, a restriction in the, in the Commerce City growth boundary.
Mr. Moreno?
If we could, Mr. Mayor...
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
...address the first one, and then we...
Exactly, and we'll come back to that one. Thank you.
Mr. Moreno?
My, my question was regarding the second.
Let's hold off on the second one. Okay, Mr. Bullock? Second one?
Second one.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, is there anything we could do also with the current homes as far as selling and folks coming to table to buy a house for closing? Documentation to let people know exactly what they're getting into when they're, as far as they're buying and, and as far as the fracking, the wells and everything, because right now...
Mr. Douglas? Because we have a motion and a second on the floor, I want to keep the content of our discussion at this point just to that motion and second. Once we get past that, then we can go into an additional scenario that you can talk about that. So please, just hold that thought for a moment. On the first motion and second that we have, well, the only motion and second we have on the floor right now, I would like to tell everybody that I can fully support that motion and second, but I want to make it clear that my intentions of supporting that motion and second are not to give a negative outlook towards the industry. I want to make sure that my intentions of supporting that type of an ordinance are merely to protect the best interest of our community and the safety of our community. I don't want to get into this to being a situation where we're battling the industry. I want to keep a focus, and I want these things to move forward from the standpoint of, of safety and responsibility to our residents. And I, I just felt it necessary for me to say that before I voted on the motion.
Mr. Mayor, the proposed ordinance, if this passes, will reaffirm what you have just said regarding support for the mining industry. We're not opposed to the mining industry. We're opposed to the public health, safety, and welfare initiative.
I know, but we've, we've gotten so far into the issue, I don't want it to be taken out of context because of, of, of politics. I want to make sure that we're online to do the best we can for our residents, and from that standpoint, I will support the motion. And seeing, Mr. Moreno?
Just to emphasize the comments of the mayor, given the recent situation, I think at, at minimum, we owe our residents, you know, the, the consideration of making sure that everything is in place in our land development code and making sure that these activities happen responsibly. So I, I agree, completely agree with your comment.
Absolutely, I can't agree more. Mr. Mackel Downey?
Just to, to come behind those comments, I, I don't think any part of the, the motion or the comments that I put forth were meant to infer that, and so I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that.
No, they did not.
I think, you know, as a council, it's, to Mr. Moreno's point, our duty to stand up for our citizens, and I think there are enough questions out there without clear answers that we need to take this pause and allow the clear heads to prevail, the research to, to occur, and ensure that the safety is, is paramount for our community.
Absolutely. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I do like this motion here, because over at the Perry Farm subdivision, the 80 acres between Reunion Parkway and Waldorf Street, there, there are two future well sites, so with the six, with this motion going forward, we can better understand what's out there as well. So appreciate that, because that's in city limits.
I, I agree, and I want to make something really clear. There was nothing in the motion. I'm right on line with you guys. I just feel responsibility. We have Suncor and, and Slumber Jay and some other large industrial, industrial users of this nature that I don't want them to take a negative ill effect that we are trying to stop them from doing their work. I want them to understand it's a safety and responsibility aspect of, of, of the community, and that I do support 100%. We're seeing no other discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, Mr. Mackel Downey, if you would like to talk about your secondary motion?
Just to recap, then, in the spirit of the motion that we just approved with the aim of putting a moratorium on activity within Commerce City proper, given that we have the unique boundary that we do and so many unincorporated parcels that are either within the city as an enclave or along the periphery of our city in the county that are primed for, for drilling activity. As the most recent site is a prime example, it sits directly alongside our community, a couple hundred yards from homes, yet sits clearly in the county. In order to help give some pause to future activity of that nature while we continue to conduct this research, I would just ask that council support a letter that we would send under the mayor's signature to the county commissioners, asking for them to consider at minimum supporting a moratorium in the growth boundary of Commerce City during the same period of time that our moratorium runs while we affect our, our analysis on the impacts and the safety.
Mr. Douglas? Your light was on? No, Mr. Moreno?
Regarding this particular issue, and I, I don't specifically have a, a problem with this, my only concern is, do we, in essence, considering the, the recent activity around, around the current well, which is located in unincorporated Adams County but within Commerce City's growth boundary? My thought is just that Adams County doesn't necessarily have the authority to put a stop to something like that, and so does our letter, in a, in a sense, fall on deaf ears because they don't have the authority to, to put a stop to that?
That's a great point, and I would just say that based on some information I received, and I can circulate the article in question, but it, and I made mention of it in my opening comment, Douglas County is taking action and opening up to public comment its rulemaking around drilling. In September, El Paso County Commissioners passed a four-month suspension on issuing oil and gas permits to give the county time to create local land use regulations to address drilling and exploration. This came on the heels of a firm seeking to step up activity in their area. So I think my, my intent of this letter is to suggest in a clear way to our, our commissioners that while they may feel they have no options, it appears that they do, and I would suggest that they at minimum look at what actions are being taken by other counties in the state in this vein and consider taking similar or same.
In, in that situation, I guess I'd just ask that that be included in the letter for Adams County to, I guess, look at the approaches of other counties and, and have some, I guess, flexibility in, in what they decide to do.
Yep, and that would be my, my intent.
Mr. Bullock?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Mr. Mackel Downey?
I think that was my comment from earlier.
Okay. Councilwoman Carson?
I would fully support that. If you take a look at what's going on around us, Brighton, Fort Lupton, this is, this is what's coming our way. So the moratorium gives us time, I think. I, I think what happened is, is the city, we woke up one morning and there it was. And, and with the moratorium, it was a very wise person who said to me when I was sworn into council that you need to be able to look 50 years down the road. These things come and sometimes they're like booms in, in towns, and so I, I do think we need the time to step back and to really think where Commerce City should be going with this, what we want to wrap our heads around with it, because even if there is not huge drilling going on in our city, it's going on in the surrounding cities, which in turn will filter home sales or, or whatever be it. So no, I fully support a moratorium, especially for the fact that as a city, we need some time to, to really do some research, some studying, and, and see where we're going so that we really are an educated entity in this.
Okay, Mr. Benson?
Yes, thanks. And I think as part of that article or part of the action that Colorado Springs has taken, haven't they annexed some property around the city to give themselves some authority over that property? And that's one of the things I was suggesting earlier, that we take a look at some of our little enclaves and get them in the city so we've got some control. I don't know how much control we're, we're going to have, but we have no control right now, really. We have to go to the county and ask them to exert control. If it's part of the city, we don't have to go to the county. So we can exert whatever control we have. I don't know exactly what that is right now, but we don't have any control right now.
Mr. Benson, on the property that had the well, we do surround it, and it would take a three-year process to annex that forcibly, from my understandings. And, and doing so, I, I have a, a problem with trying to force annex people that don't want to be a part of this community. And once, and to look at a broader picture, you have the outlet subdivision that is up against our, our boundary, our growth boundary within the county. And even if we get compliance from the county on those that are in our growth boundary, we still have risk of wells being drilled next to, and we will always have risk of wells being drilled next to, properties that are already outreaching to our boundaries of our growth area. So I think that that, that can just compound and compound and compound. I think what we do, and I'm supportive of the motion and the second, to have a simple request to the county to look into it, that it's, it's a concern of ours, and those properties that are, are surrounding our neighborhoods have some, some scrutiny when the county is allowing things to happen in the county that have an effect on our residents. But to look at it globally from an annexation standpoint, I'm against forced annexation. I want people to annex to the city because they want to, and we are going to always have a risk of wells next to our homes that are on the boundaries of our growth boundary. So I want to be careful that we don't over escalate what we're trying to do, but we get the word to the county. And, and with that said, I am in favor of the motion that's on the floor.
Well, there's nothing that we can do about property that's on the, the border of our growth boundary, but we can do something about property that's
We could, we could always ask the county to consider that as well if it's within the county. We could ask Brighton to consider, uh, compassion to our community if it's within Brighton on our boundary. So there are some things we can do, which is in line with what the motion has requested. But when it comes to the annexation piece, I just think that that part of it's ineffective and, and doesn't, uh, doesn't, doesn't get us to where we need to be. Anything else before I move on?
Well, it doesn't get us exactly where we want to be, but I don't know anything that is going to get us there. But it gets us a little further down the road. And if it's going to take three years, the sooner we get that process started, the sooner that's going to occur.
Well, again, I think, I think we're taking the right steps. I think that the action plan
If that property that we're concerned about right now was in the city, at least we would have gotten notice about three or four months ago. And that's one of the big problems I think that people had with regard to that is that there was no notice.
But I think we've addressed that.
And then Mr. Douglas drives by it and sees what it is and starts making some inquiries. And all of a sudden, we find out that they're going to do the fracking two weeks ago.
I know, but I think we addressed that in our, in our, uh, uh, plan, our action plan that we, we discussed the other night about notice of those kind of things. And that would include notice of properties outside of Commerce City within unincorporated Adams County.
Right.
And I want to try to stay on point with ordinances or the, or the, the motions and seconds that we have before us. And then we can deliberate on other issues as it comes forward. But I think
No, I'll, I'll vote for that motion. It's just that this is something that we need to consider because it's an alternative that might, uh, help us in the future. Because why should we have to rely on somebody else notifying us?
I agree.
When we, if we have an ordinance that says that these companies have to notify us, and if they don't, then there's going to be some sanctions for that. Because right now, we're just relying on, frankly, I don't know why Adams County just, in a normal circumstance, would not have given us notice of this. I'm very disappointed that they didn't. I mean, without us having to beg them or ask them, please give us this notice next time, why didn't we get it the first time? I, I don't understand that because I thought we had a better relationship with Adams County.
Well, I want to be careful there because I think we do have a good relationship with Adams County. And I don't know as though they've ever in the past have had to notify us for this type of a situation. I think that we learned from this situation and we put the action plan in place. With that is a direction to the county to notify us of any new ones so that we aren't caught behind the eight ball on it and that we can get out and inform our residents. So I think that piece is taken care of.
You're right, Mr. Mayor.
Is this motion, am I correct?
That has been addressed. That has been addressed.
That has been addressed.
Both to the Oil and Gas Commission and with the county.
Right. So this motion that we are discussing right now is a courtesy letter to the county asking them to support our position and look into taking steps, um, to en- ensure our residents within our growth boundary are protected in the, in the same manner that we are taking those steps. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So I think, I think that's a separate issue, but I think it's already been addressed. So I want to try to stay with where we're at in the, in, in the process. And, and anything you have, please bring up during this time after we have taken care of this motion. Uh, Mr. Douglas?
Uh, yeah, just want to echo, uh, Miss, um, Carson said about, um, our actions. Um, take note that other cities are, are watching what we do. So, um, I heard that on Sunday. So it's, uh, we're, uh, going in the right direction. So I support this.
Okay. Mr. Mackel Downey?
I think you made the comments I was going to make. I just, I think there are a number of updates that are contained in the material that, that staff has and can distribute that lists the actions that have been taken by staff thus far. And so the piece about communication with the, the county and the request to set the city up as a local desert or a local governmental designee, those are steps that have been taken based on our learning. And so you reinforced that. And I just, I know staff will forward that material to
That would be great if they could. Mr. Moreno?
One more question on this motion specifically. Um, I request that Adams County Commissioners, let, let's say they do impose the moratorium, would it affect the current well that's being fracked right now?
I wouldn't think so.
It's, it, it's done. They're just extracting fluids. I don't think it would have an effect on, on that, would it not?
Permit's been issued.
Right, the
Permit, go ahead.
Permit has already been issued for the activity that's, that's occurring at that well site. We would be asking the county to place a moratorium on any zoning actions they would be asked to take for additional well operations.
New permits or, or, yeah, or, or any new permit activity.
To the extent that those new operations would require some zoning approval from Adams County.
Within our growth boundary.
Within our growth boundary.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing no more discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion has carried. Um, do you have anything further, Mr. Mackel Downey?
I do not, thank you.
We are in administrative business. Is there anyone else on the council that would like to, uh, bring something forward to the council during administrative business? Mr. Benson?
Yes, I know, uh, there was a meeting, when was it, on Sunday over at Landmark Academy, um, to discuss the issue. Um, I've gotten a couple of calls from constituents wondering why I wasn't there. And I don't want to have to take any more of those calls. I will be at the next, any other meetings regarding that issue.
With that being said, I want to ask Mr. Gaylor to reinform us about the sunshine law if our two representatives are, um, Councilman Douglas and Councilman Mackel Downey, because that was the intent of putting them on there as representatives.
There's not going to be any violation of the sunshine law.
Well, that's why I'm
I'm not going to disappoint my constituents by not being at a meeting.
Well, I agree with you. I agree with you. I would, I think we all want to participate.
There's not going to be any violation of the sunshine law. Mr. Gaylor knows that.
Well, Mr. Gaylor?
Let's start with a recognition that those of you who are part of the community that are impacted or possibly impacted by a well operation are part of the group then that is involved with the discussion. Even though you don't say anything, you're there supporting what is taking place.
Okay.
Now, that's a little bit different than if you don't, if you're not a member of the so-called organization that is conducting a meeting, like you go to a county commissioner meeting. I have previously written the opinion that that doesn't violate the open records law or open meetings law. If all of you go, it's not your meeting. But you put a different slant on it when you're part of the group conducting the meeting. Even though you don't say anything, if there are three of you there, the worst that can happen is you just recuse yourself from voting. So it's fine to go, but when it comes before you, you jeopardize the record, the city record, if we get sued by oil and gas organizations because of some decision you make and it goes to court and you vote on it and you've been participating in, shall we say, meetings that violate the open meetings law. Now, I am, I recognize I'm taking a conservative approach, but I'm just trying to appro, trying to assure that whatever action you take can be upheld legally. Because we're going to great lengths to rewrite the regulations, to adopt an emergency ordinance, to do all these things that try to protect the public health, safety and welfare. And then when it comes in before you for a conditional use, quasi judicial proceeding, I don't want you to be placed in the position of voting on something then that some court is going to say was invalid because you participated in an improper, uh,
Right. And that's why it would happen. And that would apply to anybody on this council who was at the meeting. It would apply to the other two people who were at the meeting also.
Well, I don't think so because you're not violating the open meetings law if only two people are there. And if you're not expressing
We're talking about a quasi judicial proceeding.
Now, there's a difference. There's a difference if you, if you are there and you're expressing an opinion as opposed to gathering facts. I understood that you're there to gather facts, to let people know that you're trying to, uh, assure that the city knows what the citizens are asking for. That's your role. You're not there to lead the meeting. You're not there to, uh, conduct a, uh, a, um, a campaign against, uh, the oil and gas industry. You're there to gather facts. Now, that's different than when you express an opinion and you take part in the meeting. Now, that's for two people. But soon as you get three people there, now you're violating an open meetings law statute that says you're not supposed to be there unless it's posted. Now you're conducting or participating in a meeting that's in violation of a state statute because you're a part of the group. It's not like you attending somebody else's meeting. You're there with your group's meeting. That's the difference. And I, I realize there's a problem with trying to draw that fine line, but that's what, the line that I'm seeing exists. And that's why I'm being careful about where this goes because I'm quite convinced that you're going to be seeing this in a quasi judicial proceeding down the road.
Right. And if it's a quasi judicial proceeding and there are two people from the council there and they've heard evidence or other facts that relate to the quasi judicial proceeding, they're going to be disqualified also because they were there and they heard facts outside the context of the hearing, if that's, that was the rule. But I don't think that's going to happen here. And I haven't, you know, I've read the case law on the sunshine law, been involved with the sunshine law for 30 years. I don't think there's any case law that says that I can't go and listen to what's going on because my constituents are saying that I need to be there.
Mr. Gaylor, if I may, um, first of all, um, I don't think anybody's going to get hammered on a quasi judicial thing unless they make opinions on, if, if situations that we're going to have to
Right. That's part
have a concern. They can be there and they're not, they're not going to have to abstain if they, unless they make opinions on, on the situation of what we're going to hear in a quasi judicial manner.
The two members, you're right.
Right, two members. But number, number three on this, this whole thing, I want to make sure that we take into consideration Mr. Benson's position with this council as the representative for his ward. I can see how he's being scrutinized from the neighbors. And I owe him, uh, the, the stand that I'm going to take, that I want him to be able to be involved with those meetings. Is there a way that he can be involved with those meetings as a resident member of the community so that he does not get scrutinized, um, because of he, he is that ward council member? And that is the ward that has the upset. They're going to go to him first. I know Jason and Steve both live in Reunion, Jason and South ons. That's why I wanted those guys involved and on that, on that committee because they're there. It's their neighbors. They're also affected. I think Jim is also affected. And I think more so than the rest of this council from the standpoint, he's the ward member. I would like to, uh, see if there's a compromise where he can be there as a, as a citizen member of, of the discussions rather than a representative of the council. Or if there's a way he can be there as a representative of the council without having opinions and let these guys bring back the information. Or we're going to have to have, uh, something move forward with this organization from our two members that express the reasons why no other council members can be there so that Mr. Benson is no longer scrutinized for not attending. I think one of those things have to happen.
I have an answer for you. And that is, we recognize it as a, a meeting, uh, that council members can attend, uh, because they're part of the, of the group meeting.
Right.
And we simply let it be known, the city clerk to post the meeting. Other than posting the meeting, you don't have any other response, you don't have to take minutes. There's no requirement for minutes at that type of meeting. You just post it.
It's not a city many, meeting, right.
Right. You just post it and then we, we've got ourselves covered if that's what you decide you want to do. But then, the second phase, and you hit on it, is that you can't disqualify yourself from voting by, even though you're at a meeting that's been posted, you can't express an opinion to, uh, disqualify yourself as having already, uh, decided a case before you ever hear it. But if you let, let the clerk know and these meetings are taking place and she posts them, then we're okay. That, then we recognize it as an open meeting, uh, that, uh, I would say is okay to attend.
You know how I would like to handle it.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
And to, um, um, tag on to what, so the attorney Gaylor is stating, we do need to post it within 24 hours of the meeting.
Okay. Here's what I would
Thank you.
Here's what my recommendation would be then. I have a hundred percent faith in the other eight members up here on this council. And if they want to attend that meeting, I say we post it. Um, I can, you know, Mr. Mackel Downey or Mr. Douglas can talk to whoever is heading up the citizen piece of it to notify us when there's going to be a meeting. Allow the city clerk to post it. But in my same breath, I want to make sure that this council and these members take extreme caution while at those type of meetings because we will, no doubt about it, be seeing this in a quasi judicial manner. And if he's there, it's not just him that has to be careful. It will be the other two of you or three of you, whoever is there. So the burden is not just on Jim. Everybody has to be careful that they don't cross that line. I have full faith that you won't cross that line. But just remember to be careful if we, if this is the way we go. And I prefer we go down this road because I truly believe he has the right to be at those meetings because it's his ward. Mr. Mackel Downey?
I, I just wanted to be clear that we, we are invitees to a citizen-led discussion. This was a, a late scheduled event. So I would certainly encourage the folks that are, are assuming sort of leadership capacities within that citizens group to notify us of posting. I think the intent last week of designating Mr. Douglas and I as the liaison was so that we could come back and, and speak to what happened. Um, Mr. McBroom and Mr. Aker, um, I invited them when the meeting was confirmed so that we were certain to have staff presence there because we've got staff owning those actions. And rather than speak on behalf of staff, uh, if they were available, it made more sense to have them speak for themselves. I think the fact that we've just had an administrative business come before updates, I haven't been able to recap the, the event from Saturday. So it's difficult to, uh, to kind of come behind this. But the, the point that staff made was to, out of the gate, to reinforce the fact that the, the reason there were only two council members there were for these open meetings concerns and that we were attempting to keep the city on a, on a safe footing. I think the, the key here is, we're not here to discuss, we're not there to discuss or lead or drive anything other than to be in a position to recognize where there's an item that makes better sense for the city to do it than for the citizenry to do it. It's, it's in the domain of the citizen, the, the city. And to carry that back and vice versa, where we've given direction as a council to staff to carry those updates forward. The, the citizens are in their own domain on a broader fight. And, and as you made very clear earlier, Mr. Mayor, we're not here to lead the fight against drilling in general. We're here to safeguard the community. And I think the more we muddy those meetings with our participation, right, we're not showing up to Sierra Club meetings as a council. We're not showing up to Earth First meetings as a council. That's not what we're doing.
Right.
And so my sense is that at some point, this will achieve whatever level it's going to achieve. And the citizenry will have items and they'll know to reach out to the council to say, we need your engagement on these things. And we will help engage them on those things as the designates or the liaisons to that group.
As we should.
What, what I've been trying to do in my one-on-one discussions with anyone in that community is to say, continue the things you're doing, but there is a division of what I can do with and for you as a city council member and what you can do with and for yourself as a citizen. And I just want us to keep that in mind. It's not about being there to say we're there. It's about safeguarding the city and not putting the city in an awkward position that exposes us to litigation or a number of council members having to, uh, step out of a vote at some future point. having to step out of a vote at some future point. So, hey, if, you know, the cool thing to do is go to these meetings, I will certainly be more than happy to step back and let somebody else step in. My goal right now is to help act as a facilitator and a liaison, and it made sense that Mr. Douglas and I step into that capacity. You could argue any number of different methods.
Absolutely.
I think it's a citywide concern, it's not a ward concern in my mind, this is a commerce city issue as much as it's a ward issue, so.
Well, it will be as more wells come online. I agree with you there. This will have an effect throughout the city, and it'll have an effect in every one of our neighborhoods at some point in time.
Right.
I just don't want to disallow a council member who lives in the neighborhood that is getting scrutinized the opportunity to attend, and maybe the best way to handle the solution is, I know you guys are the liaisons, I would like to keep it that way, but I would also like to afford Mr. Benson the opportunity to go, but in the fact that there is more than two council members there, I would, I want to make sure that it's posted, and I want to make sure that you protect yourself from the quasi judicial scenario.
Well, and I totally agree. I just think that this is where we have to be adults, nine adults that lead this community and be smart enough to know when we need to not talk, when we need to leave the room, when we need to excuse ourselves, and agree that our peers who we trust on council have our back. And we can't all go to everything, we can't all sit in the same seat at the same time, so we've got to figure out what that balance is going to be and commit to that and support each other. So, however we choose to pursue, proceed as a council, I will go with that direction.
Okay. Mr. Bullock.
I totally agree with Jason's thoughts on this because of the fact that if your constituents are wondering why you aren't there, what are they going to wonder when you come and you don't say nothing? Why did you sit here and not say nothing? So, it's got to be explained to them that the reason why this is being done like that is in order to protect the community, and in order to protect the community, two is enough to bring back what council needs to have said and what needs to be brought back to council. Now, if Jim feels that he is letting his constituents down by not being there, go there, but you're going to have to go there and be quiet, Jim, and I don't know if you can do that. I don't even know if you're paying attention to me.
Mr. Mayor? I think we've reached a solution to this. The only thing, I'm assuming that these meetings are open to the public, because once we post them, they're public meetings, anybody can go then, right?
But here's the problem, what I see is, I laid out some options to try to make sure that Mr. Benson felt comfortable.
Right, and I appreciate it.
What I'm hearing, though, from other council members is, I like the way it is with two representatives to bring the information back, and it's more of, let us bring back the information, and we will assure the residents that you would have been here, however, in the best scenario for best protection of the city for future situations, we need to protect ourselves. However, Mr. Benson didn't hear what Mr. Bullock had to say, and it was along those lines. So, let me, I have a couple more people that want to speak on the issue, and then we'll try to move it along so that I have and the staff has some kind of clear understanding of the direction we want to move forward. Mr. Douglas.
I think as far as solution for that, I think, you know, Jim, you could have a ward two meeting. How much time does he have to notify to have a ward two meeting? If he wants to address the issue at hand, couldn't he have a ward two meeting?
Well, I think he could, but it would be different information than otherwise he would get at that meeting, and I think it's a responsibility thing that he's feeling, you know, left out from being able to represent the constituents, and I'd like to try to clear it up tonight so that he feels good about whatever the decision is, and you guys feel good about being able to be the liaisons. Let me go through the list here. Mr. Moreno.
I don't have anything to say, I'm prepared to make a motion to satisfy this issue when necessary.
Okay. Mr. Mackel Downey, you had anything else there?
I was just going to suggest that, you know, maybe we go a little bit out of order. I give the update, my sense of the recap, and we allow staff to give the readback on the items that they have in hand, because one of the items in that is related to making the information as widely available as possible so that it is known, so that if people haven't shown up to these community meetings and heard the direct update, or they haven't attended a council meeting, staff is making, taking steps per our direction last week to make the information that they've assembled and the actions that they have in motion available on the city website. So, I guess the point is, of anything that I've seen us come across in my four and a half years on council, I've seen the most unified approach between staff and council to get information together, get it presented and packaged and available to the citizenry, and I can't think of another example where I think it's been, come together as quickly as it has in this regard. So, I mean, if folks are wanting to hear the update, I can give the update, if we want to wait, Mr. Moreno has a potential motion, how do we want to proceed? What information do we have to have in hand in order to have a completion of the discussion?
Well, I think to be able to proceed, after our discussion and looking at the different scenarios, Mr. Benson, what's your stand on this now that you understand where the council has discussed?
Well, I don't see a problem with posting a notice, and I'm certainly probably more aware than anybody on this council about what the rules are, quasi judicial versus the legislative process. I've read the case law on that, I understand what's involved. I've been to one meeting already where there were four of us there.
Yep.
With Mr. Douglas, Mr. Mackel Downey, and you, Mr. Mayor, and myself.
I agree.
And I think the only thing that I said at the end of that meeting was that we need to find out what our legal rights are and go from there.
That's correct.
And that's still my position, because I still don't know exactly what all of our legal rights are. But all we have to do is post a notice, and then anybody can go. If anybody wants to get themselves in trouble and not be able to vote in a quasi judicial proceeding, then I guess it's going to be up to them to have enough sense not to do that.
Okay. Councilwoman Carson.
I don't want to make anybody angry, but I see both sides. I agree with Mr. Benson, he is the elected ward member from that actual ward. So, every vote that was cast for him actually came out of that neighborhood right there, not a big surrounding entire city where you don't know where the votes actually came from. So, Mr. Benson, I do believe if his residents want him there, he should be there. Is it not just as simple that, I don't know if Mr. Douglas would be interested or Mr. Mackel Downey of saying they would remove themselves so we could still have two there, but one, and maybe that's the way we should look at things from now on if something like this comes up. Maybe it should be the council member from that ward plus an at-large or just plus another council person, but should it always be that ward representative that was elected from that ward?
Mr. Douglas.
You know, unless we handle this like a boards and commission where there's two board members and an alternate, because sometimes maybe either I or Jason may not be really available, and Jim could be an alternate, but, I mean, it's not really, you know, picking and choosing, I mean, I think we all mean good, you know, because we're there for the citizens, that's why we were elected, for them. As far as representation goes, Brian made that very clear of why me and Jason were there, and I could understand the sentiments from Jim, and, you know, let's just be fair about this, we all want the same thing. It's just pretty much because when we were there, we weren't conducting a meeting, we were there listening, maybe adding on some things that you just clarified things, but we weren't steering the meeting, we weren't telling these people things that they wanted to hear. We were there only to pretty much observe and report back to council. And so, I thought we did that in a very good manner. Brian, Tom Akers was there, and, you know, if any questions were put towards council, Brian was there to answer them. So, I think the meeting went very well. So, you know, if that's what we have to do as far as open meetings and all that, I think we're taking this too far, I really do. I think it's just, it's just some people really concerned, and in it being more people, people just want answers, they want to know that we care. And if we have to do a rotating chair thing for two people, that's fine, I'm not against that, but I think we're taking this too far.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. I too can see both sides to this, I totally understand that. However, my concern is, when we decided on this last week, this is something that should have been brought up at that time. I don't, I don't know, do we anticipate several more meetings of this nature, considering the fact that we are in the position that we're in as far as, you know, submitting the letter and moving forward with seeking counsel? That's just my concern, and also, I mean, I echo with, I agree with Councilman Douglas as far as trying to approach this as a boards and commissions, having an alternative available. But honestly, I really think we just, we really just need to move forward on this, make our decision. Again, I see both sides, but I just don't anticipate us having these meetings, and a lot of times, from what I'm understanding, that these meetings are last minute, there's not really going to, there's not, she's not going to have the opportunity to be able to post a meeting 24 hours in advance. That's just what I've seen recently. So, I just wanted to put my two cents in and at least just come to an agreement so we can move forward on this. Thank you.
Mr. Mackel Downey.
I'm going to bite my tongue.
Okay. And then, last one I have on here is Mr. Benson.
You know, my presence at these meetings, I just don't understand why you think it's going to cause that much of a problem. If it means that I have to recuse myself from the final vote, I will do that, but I've got to be there and show the people that elected me that I'm interested enough in these meetings, and I know, I called Mr. McBroom before that meeting and I said, "Please explain to the people why I'm not there." I still got calls wondering why I wasn't there, and that's why I wasn't brought up in this way last week, because I didn't know that I was going to get those calls. But when I get calls from people that elected me saying, "Why weren't you there? You need to be there, you're the representative of this ward." If I have to recuse myself from the final vote because of some imaginary reason, then maybe that's what we'll have to do. But I fully intend to go to these meetings, whether it disqualifies me or not. I'm not going to let my people down, and I don't think that this council is, has some superior right over the people that elected me about where they want me to go, what they want me to do on their behalf.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, if I can help bring this to a conclusion.
Yes, please.
Having heard what Jim just said, Councilman Benson just said, and I fully was aware of that feeling that he had, because I worked with Councilman Benson for some time, and it's true, this council cannot dictate where he goes or when he goes, he can go. So, the real, I think, the only solution you have is that we post it, it's not a big deal, because we posted in the civic center area, right? So, it's not like we have a problem with posting it. So, we post it, it's a public meeting, and whoever wants to go, including the public, can go, and you just, as the mayor has indicated, just be careful so you don't disqualify yourself quasi judicial. Expressing an opinion in advance of hearing the evidence in a proceeding, that's a whole separate area, and just don't do that. You go, gather facts, listen, and so be it. But it's not a big deal to put a sign up downstairs, post, we do it all the time. So, that's really where I think you're at. Now, what I would be concerned about is we don't post it, Councilman Mackel Downey, Councilman Douglas goes, and then Councilman Benson goes because he feels compelled to. Now, I do have a problem from a legal perspective, and just for your information, it's not like we're operating in a vacuum here. We've already received open records requests from the oil and gas industry about proceedings that are going on in this city regarding the oil and gas issue. So, it's not like we're not being observed. So, if we violate that open records or open meetings law, it's very likely that we're going to be questioned on it. Enough said.
Thank you, and as part of the discussion, I know there was a mention of maybe one or the other would step down. I would never recommend or drive a discussion about that. I'm not going to pit any of our council members against each other, these were our representatives that we picked. If Mr. Benson wants to participate, he is correct, we cannot stop him. However, I do feel compelled to say that the residents are going to be better served with you having a vote at the end result of this situation than they would if we had three or four or five council members at those meetings. With that said, I will ask this council to provide me with a motion and some direction. Mr. Moreno.
I move that we maintain the current structure with the liaisons to the fracking issue in Councilman Douglas and Councilman Mackel Downey, appoint Mr. Benson as an alternate, and I move that we instruct the city clerk to post the meetings 24 hours in advance.
Is there a second? Mr. Benson?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Mr. Manager.
Sorry, just one quick comment.
We barely got in, the buzzer.
Yeah, the motion was to post the meetings, we'll do that whenever it's possible. Again, if meetings occur and we receive notice less than 24 hours in advance of the meeting, we're not able to legally post the meeting, assuming we're aware of the meeting, we will post them.
Okay, with that being said, I would ask the council to try to work together on this issue. If it's not a posted meeting, it happens something overnight type of thing, but I really think this group that our representatives are working with have gotten theirself organized enough that they do now know 24 hours in advance, and I don't think that that's going to be an issue as some may think it would be. I don't think you're going to see those, you need to have it tonight type of meeting. It was the one well issue, we've got an action plan in place, I don't foresee that kind of a need for an emergency neighborhood meeting because they will have notice on any new future drilling operations. So, I'm comfortable with the motion and the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion is carried. Mr. Benson, your lights on, do you still have anything further you'd like to bring forward?
Not on that issue, I just have one other matter.
Well, okay. We are still under administrative business, and if you have something for administrative business, now would be the time, since your lights on.
I just wanted to say, you know, I was appointed the city designee to go to RTD meetings, and I want to resign that position. I'm going to go to the meetings, but I won't go as a designee of the council.
Who was the alternate to that board, do you recall? We, wait a minute, there's a, we did not designate anybody from the council to be a true representative of the council. Microphone there, Renee.
Oh, we did not, because we are not on the RTD board, what we said is, the person that goes will go as an observer for the city. We did not designate anybody to go as a representative from this council. You were going on your own free will to watch the RTD board, and I can, I think what you said was, because of some of the things they've done in the past with spending money and not spending it up here, you'd like to go down there and make sure that things are being kept above board, but we did not designate anybody because we don't have the right to designate anybody.
That's good, so there was never any designation, so there's no reason to go any further.
No problem. You don't have to resign.
No problem.
We're still under administrative We're still under administrative business. Is there any other council members with anything to bring forward to the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move into the report portion of the meeting. Interim City Manager? Mr. Geller, you can go first.
I don't have anything further, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
The hour is late, so, uh, I will be brief. Um, first of all, uh, we did distribute to everybody this evening, um, this weekly report, um, just says on the top from the city manager's office. Lots of good information in it. I won't highlight it tonight because it is getting late. The first sheet has some events that are coming up. The, uh, the sheets after that are follow-up of action items that the council asked us to, uh, address during a council meeting. This one is unusually thick, so please take a look at the information. If you have questions, don't hesitate to give me a call. Uh, we also have published this week the first fracking update. We emailed this to you over the weekend. Uh, one of the action items is development of a page on the city's website dedicated to this issue. That is where we will post these updates on a weekly basis. There are a number of action items that staff is continuing to pursue. Rather than highlight all of them, I think the most significant was the Oil and, Oil and Gas Commission hearing that occurred earlier today. I would like Ms. Ryan Cordero to provide a, a brief update of city staff and Mr. Moreno's participation at the hearing today.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I'll try to be brief, um, because of how late it is in the evening. Um, so that, there was a, a meeting of the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission early this mor- uh, this morning to explore and look at some clarification and some addition, new rulemaking, uh, that the commission had been considering. Um, the, there was a, a large turnout of, um, members of the public, people involved with conservation, um, organizations, uh, elected officials, and also, uh, oil and gas industry folks that, um, gave testimony during the, the public hearing portion of the, of the meeting. Um, among some of the concerns that were expressed, um, some folks were straightforward wanting all of the rulemaking to be redone because they felt that it didn't go far enough. Um, one of the major, major items that kept, kept coming up over and over and even came up in, uh, Mayor Proton Moreno's, uh, testimony was to beef up the disclosure of chemicals in the hydraulic fracking fluid, to eliminate the exception for trade secrets, which was also expressed by Mayor Proton Moreno, um, to also, um, require operators of hydraulic fracking operations to post the disclosures prior to operation and not after operation have begun, uh, to do away with industry operators self-evaluating and conducting their own sampling of their fluids, to include language that would not, would not exempt operators from liability in the case that they claim ignorance of what was in the fracking fluids. Um, some people came up and said that they wanted to ban fracking altogether. Um, they also asked to, uh, for the, for the, um, for the industry to provide an, oh, I'm sorry, for the commission to provide an easier, more transparent process, uh, for contesting trade secret, uh, claims, uh, to regulate the, someone got up and talked very, very intensely about regulating further the flow that came back up after the, the fracking took place. Um, also to improve the public process of the commission, because apparently a lot of people felt like there was not a lot of opportunity for public comment, except for this morning. Um, and so those were the kinds of, those were the kinds of comments that came up. In addition to that, there were a couple of comments in favor of these sets of rules that the commission was considering today. They felt that, um, these rules added consistency and clarity for, um, people in the oil industry. And then there was a gentleman that stood up and talked about how a number of the, uh, chemicals that are used in addition to the sand and the water, um, for the hydraulic fracking help, um, to prevent the use of more water, uh, and more horsepower, which would be necessary if those fluids were not, if those chemicals were not in use. So there were, there were all types of, um, comments. But just so you know, the, the commission was considering very specific rules and clarifications. They were not really there to act on all of the public comment. And so they were looking specifically at, um, number one, the definition of chemicals under the rules. They wanted to, they, they will be considering chemicals to mean both chemicals that are toxic or non-toxic when it comes to having to disclose. And by the way, the, the disclosure, it was one item that people had a lot of problem with, happens on a website that's called, um, fracfocus.org. A lot of folks felt that that wasn't the appropriate venue to have the, the register with all, with all the, the, the information about the fracking fluids in different operations. They felt that it would be better if, um, perhaps the Department of Health, uh, had that list on their website. And another item that, that was of contention was that apparently if you go on that website on, um, fracfocus, you can't really search very easily the contents of the fluids of any given operation. And so the, the, uh, staff of the commission did recommend that the folks who are in charge of fracfocus.org, um, improve the searchability of the site. So that is part of the clarifications that took place today. In addition to the definition of chemicals, that, then they really focused on a portion of the, the rules of the commission, which is Rule 205A, which has to do with the disclosure. And, um, there, the, most of the focus was on trade secret challenges. So what are the remedies for people who feel like they've, that they've been, um, some, somehow, uh, hurt or misled, um, through the trade secret loophole? And then also, um, the designation of trade secrets. So, um, who gets to designate it? The, the staff of the commission recommended, um, against the request of the public to maintain the current loophole and to not request that, um, operators submit a list of their trade secret items. And they gave a few, a few reasons. One of the reasons was that they wouldn't know what it means. They wouldn't know how to evaluate what those fluids are because they don't have those expertise. They also were concerned that, um, if the operators provided those lists of trade secrets to the commission, then those will be searchable by any party via the Colorado Open Records Act. Um, and, and then there were some other concerns that they expressed why they did not, um, why they did not recommend that, that the trade secrets loophole be, um, closed. Um, one other item that it'll be very interesting to watch for has to do with, uh, Rule 205A Subpart C, disclosures not required, and I mentioned that earlier. It, it reads, "Rule 25A will not require suppliers, service companies, or operators to disclose chemicals which are not disclosed to them, were not intentionally added to the hydraulic fracturing fluid, or occur incidentally, or are otherwise unintentionally present." This part of Rule 205A is similar to the proposed Texas disclosure rule, and is intended to, to ensure that requiring disclosure of all chemicals will not impose unfair, on unre- or unreasonable burdens or on companies. In layman's terms, what this rule does, uh, which is being recommended by the staff of the commission, it exempts from liability any operator, service provider, or owner if they claim that they were ignorant to what those liquids were. Well, it, it is in, um, conflict with an existing rule that is in effect with the commission right now that automatically attaches liability to the operator. And it's a, and it's a strategy originally put in place by the commission so that if something bad were to happen, they would know exactly where to go. They would go right to the operator and say, you have to explain what happened, otherwise you're liable. Um, and so it would be the operator's responsibility to make sure that the service providers and that the owner had their act straight, essentially. So, so, um, this was something that came up during the staff presentation, and one of the commissioners questioned, um, why this is being proposed in, 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 in conflict with an existing rule. And, uh, but they, they, um, the meeting went very late. Um, in fact, I'm not sure that they're done yet, and, uh, they, they have not had an opportunity to rule. But those were, I wanted it to be very clear to you, Mr. Mayor and Council, that the, it was a, um, small scope in terms of what they were considering. It wasn't everything that was, was brought up, uh, during the public hearing. And that's it.
I would just like to say, when we do have the, uh, the, the results of how the commission went forward with these rulings, would you please, uh, email them or send us a message so that we're aware? And I want to also thank, uh, you, um, Mayor Proton Moreno, Mr. Bullock, and was there any of the other council that went, Mr. Benson, um, for going and representing the city at the state level for our interests. Okay, thank you. Mr. Manager, anything else?
Uh, yes, sir, uh, two additional items. Uh, one is that there are several resident vacancies on various city boards and commissions. Uh, there are currently vacancies on the planning commission, the liquor authority, the housing authority, and the cultural council. We've received 11 applications to fill those various openings. The city council in the past has wanted to interview those applicants before deciding on appointments. We've had pretty good luck in the past with conducting those interviews prior to scheduled council meetings. We would like to get them done before the end of the year. That leaves us two council meetings before the end of the year. If we do all, all of the interviews before one council meeting, we think it'll take a couple of hours. So that's one option. Schedule the interviews before either the meeting on the 12th or the 19th. We could also split the interviews up and do some before each of the next two meetings. That way we could start a little bit later, perhaps 5:00. Uh, so we'd like the council's permission to do that, and then would like to know what your preference would be.
Okay. Um, I hear split them up here. What's the council okay with splitting them up to two meetings? Seeing no one with, what, you'd want to do one meeting?
We would have to get here at 4:00, Jim, to do that many people.
Hmm, there's some of these folks have. Right. Okay, I think splitting them probably works the best. Uh, JD?
Didn't we schedule about 10 minutes per interview last time?
Yeah.
So you could do 12 in two hours i- if we did one meeting?
Yeah, but we'd still have to start before 5:00.
Yeah.
And I think that's part of the concern with some of the, some of the members having full-time jobs that wouldn't get off until 5:00, I want to afford them the opportunity. So.
You know, if, if others have a work conflict, I, I'm not going to push that. Let's just do it at a two hour, one hour one week and another hour the next week. I don't want to interrupt.
Perfect. Any other concerns? With that, I do have a question. I put forward a request that all of the unsuccessful, um, folks that had candidates that had run for office be notified about our opening so that they could stay engaged with our community. And I want to make sure that happens so that they're afforded the opportunity of an interview if they so desire to pursue one, pursue one of those boards.
We will, uh, absolutely contact them. The applications that you would be, uh, the applicants that you would be interviewing are applications that have been received throughout the whole year. So it's a process that's been going on for quite some time. We will reach out to those, to those folks as well.
My reasonings behind it are because they want to have involvement with this community, and I don't want them to be discouraged from having that involvement. So I would prefer that you gave them, or somebody gave them a personal call and said, hey, these are the boards we have available. If you're interested, please come down and fill out an application. And I think you could probably do that in a very short notice, um, so that when we start this process, we at least have afforded them the opportunity.
We absolutely will.
Okay.
Mister.
So, so based on your direction, we will schedule interviews at 5:00 on the 12th, 5:00 on the 19th. Uh, we'll send a packet out that includes all of the applications shortly.
Okay. Want to comment on that timing, sir? Go ahead.
Um, and I don't know if I didn't hear it or not, um, those applicants that are currently alternates and that are applying for regular appointment slots have already received the approvals of the various boards and commissions that they have served alternates as. Is it this council's desire to interview those people as well or no? If it is not this council's desire to do so, um, because they have been basically pre-approved, if you will, by the regular members, that would cut down the number of your applicants.
Well, how does the council feel about it? Do you want to see them all?
No, it would be alternates that are would be going to fill full-time vacancies, is what it would be. And we have, my concern with it, not that I want to drag it out any further than it has to be dragged out, but we have a majority of new council members on this council, and I think it affords them the opportunity, um, to have input on who serves on those boards. So I personally would like the new members to have the opportunity. Now, the rest of the council, I don't make the decisions here, this council does. So I'm open for any input from the council. If they feel it's worth shorten, shortening the timeframe of, of, of interviews, um, then, then speak up so that we can give the staff some direction. But I, I want everybody to be afforded the opportunity to see who's, who's taking those positions.
Seeing none? You have direction?
All right, thank you. I just have, uh, one final, uh, update. Just one consideration on the timing for the 12th. It's, uh, the same night as the XL open house and the Adams 14 art show. The, uh, open house is at 4:00. That's the night at the Rec Center, and I assume you'll have council participation at that, so, um, and I, I don't know how long that's anticipated to go. I think it's scheduled for two hour, three hours, actually, so, just for that.
I will be at 4:00. I'll be there and then you just come here.
Well, the thing is, if we're doing, if we're going an hour early, it's going to cut down on your availability to be over there, and that's what Jason's bringing up. So I, I think what Jason's saying is, do you want to do it this one, you want to skip this next Monday so that you can be afforded the opportunity to participate at the XL for the majority of the time that would be allotted before council starts? Or do you want to do it, um, after the meeting? Well, you can't do it after, it'll be too late. Um, or do you want to schedule it for another time? So, Mr. Douglas, do you have any input?
I say we, uh, schedule for another time. We, you know, just like tonight, um, you know, we're, we, we just keep adding more things on, and there's no telling how the interview's going to go. So I think we just need to reschedule that for another, uh, time.
Any other council have input? I agree with, uh, Mr. Douglas. I think the, uh, Suncor meeting's important, and we need to have as majority of participation as we can that night over at the Rec Center.
The other option then would be to schedule interviews the night of the 19th and do the second group of interviews after the first of the year. Our goal in trying to do them before the end of the year was to get those positions filled so that, uh, those new appointees could begin their service in January, but it's not critical that we, that we do it that way. So we'll do the first interviews on the 19th and the other, uh, I guess would be before the January 9th council meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
One final.
Really?
No, last, but certainly not least, uh, you received notification last week of Brittany Morris Saunders' resignation and intent to, uh, go to work for the Downtown Denver Partnership. Uh, her last day with the city will be December 16th. However, tonight is her last council meeting. She will not be at next Monday's council meeting. So I wanted to take a moment, uh, to thank her publicly for her tremendous service. So I wanted to take a moment to thank her publicly for her tremendous service to the Commerce City community. Personally, it's very much been a pleasure working with her. She has, without a doubt, advanced our economic development efforts significantly beyond where they were before she arrived, and she's just a wonderful person. She's got tremendous positive energy. It's been infectious within our organization, and I'm sorry to see her go.
Well, thank you, Brittany, and good luck.
Thank you. That is all, sir.
Have an echo on that, Mr. Mayor Protem.
I just want to say, Brittany, this was all straight. This is why the meeting has gone on so long, is because we had to put you through the gauntlet before you left, our last rate ritual hazing. But in all seriousness, best of luck in your new position.
I guess we're going to start with council, but before we do so, I would like to recognize one of our council members, Mr. Jim Benson. I would like to announce that he's been selected to be the Democratic Municipal Official State Chairman in expanding his role on his support with this community. He's taken on some additional duties, and I respect that, Jim. So congratulations.
Well, thank you, and it's the first time in about a year that we've had a Democrat in that position.
Well, I'm not going to comment, but I'll just let that one slide. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's right. You had the twist tonight.
Yep.
Okay, let's start with Mr. Douglas.
Okay, thank you. Started out on Thursday, went to the North Metro Chambers Holiday After Hours, and it was a good event despite the weather. It was a really good turnout. And on Friday, attended the CC BPA Gala Friday night, and I want to congratulate Trudy Smith as recipient of the Citizen of the Year and TechRitech as honorary for receiving the Business of the Year Award, especially since TechRitech is in their final year here in Commerce City. We will miss them, their presence in the city. And then on Saturday, I also helped with the CC BPA, the Santa event, as far as cleaning up. I'd like to commend Maria Carver Hall, her superior dedication in making both annual events successful. And I want to thank Sean as the emcee, and Renee as the auctioneer at the gala, and thanks folks for planning the city Christmas party that was great on Saturday night as well. And then Sunday was the meeting for the fracking and the citizens, as far as the group put that whole thing together and just keep moving forward in a positive direction. You know, we gave feedback when it was needed. I appreciate Brian and Tom for being there with their support, because I think that's what we need to see down the road is when we have things like this, the city staff be involved too, so it gives them more clarity. Thank you.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the ICSC open house panel on Tuesday evening, and we really had some great speakers that offered a plethora of information and wisdom in regards to our vision for the former Mile High Greyhound Park. And it was interesting because we had, you know, they had slides of different areas, one of them Belmar and Lakewood, Westminster, the renovation of the old mall, let's see, Lowry, and Aurora Town Center. And what I took away from that was that this is not something that's going to happen in a few years. They're looking at maybe five, 10, 15 years, just depending on the development. But it's kind of amazing to look back and see, you know, 10, 15 years ago, you don't even remember that even being in the first stages, and all of a sudden now you see these wonderful areas, like Lowry is beautiful. I mean, they've got beautiful housing, they've got a lot of amenities, retail, recreational. So I think there's a lot of, a lot of hope for us when we're looking at that vacant piece of property. So that was good to attend that. Also, I, let's see, I attended the CC BPA Gala as well at Worth Manor, very nice. Renee, I have to commend you on your auctioneering skills. You're quite the comedian. That's what I can only say right now to be politically correct. Had a good time. Also attended the visit from Santa and Mrs. Claus at the Our Lady Mother of the Church Saturday morning. I took several hundreds of cookies. No, I didn't bake them. And despite the weather, you know, it was, it was just, it was nice to see families there with their children, weathering the storm, just to go and visit with Santa for a few minutes and get a goody bag and a snack and on their way. So that was, that was really nice. But, you know, less of a turnout this year due to the weather, but all in all, it was a very fun event. And lastly, I just wanted to say that the holiday party this weekend, city holiday party, was exceptional, and I would like to extend my thanks to all the city staff for all their hard work for putting on this wonderful event. Thank you.
Mr. Macaldonny?
I'll just be really brief. Brittany, we will miss you. Thank you for all you've done. You were a great, a great member of the team, and it was a pleasure to be able to work with you on a couple of ICSC trips, and just, again, I think we all owe you a debt of gratitude for your tireless efforts around here. Already spoke about the fracking meeting this weekend, and I'll pass the mic, so thank you.
Mr. Bullock?
I attended some of the same events that the rest of council did, the ICSC meeting on Tuesday, the CC BPA Holiday Party Friday night, the city Christmas party on Saturday night, and I want to extend my thanks to the employee staff that puts that together. That was, that was a party. That was a party. And last night, yesterday afternoon, I went to the Country Music Hall of Fame, the Colorado Country Music Hall of Fame Christmas Party over at Gala Garden, and that was quite the party. Not even being that much into country music, they really throw a party, and they do play. So I just want to thank you, and Brittany, thank you for everything you've done.
Mr. Benson?
Thank you. I also attended the ICSC event last Tuesday. On Friday, there was an open house sort of thing at the Landmark Academy. First time, it's only about two blocks away from where I live. It's really the first time I've been able to tour the whole facility, and I'm thinking that we ought to be able to have some more, two meetings in that location, in their gym. So I think instead of, we've been going to Second Creek Elementary for several of them, but I'm thinking we're going to be able to have some at Landmark Academy. I also went to the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission meeting this morning, and I think Mr. Cordero gave an excellent summary of what happened there. I just had a few other things. I mean, the main issue that was brought up by the people who were testifying was transparency. In other words, let people know what's about to happen, what's going to happen, or what has happened. The issue of trade secrets. It was, the existing rule is that if somebody, if a driller just alleges that their trade secrets would be violated, it gives them an automatic exemption from disclosing that. That was something that was, it was being pushed to overturn. Any disclosure should be before the process occurs, not afterwards. And I know he brought up the issue of unforeseen, unintentional consequences, and apparently the law is right now, if you can't, if it's unintentional, if you can't foresee the consequences, then, well, gosh, we can't be held liable for that, even though we're making a lot of money off of these drilling operations. And even though we're experts in this business, and one of the things that was proposed was what's called absolute liability. In other words, if you put, if you put a process in motion, and whatever precautions that you've taken to make it safe, if it winds up hurting somebody, you're going to be liable for it. And I don't know whether they're going to adopt that kind of absolute liability standard. It's been adopted in the nuclear energy industry since the Karen Silkwood case, but I don't know that it's going to be adopted in the oil and gas context. You know, two of the words that I heard people mention were fracastan and frackenstein at this meeting, but there was talk about increasing the fines. I think right now the fine is like $1,000 if you have a spill, if you cause damage, and there was a lot of urging to increase those fines. And everybody agreed that there will be problems, there will be spills that are going to affect the groundwater. Well, I guess it's just a matter of who's going to pay for those, and it's always, as Mr. Cordero pointed out, it's always a balancing test. You don't want to do anything that's going to hurt this industry and prevent them from producing oil and gas because this whole country relies on it, and we want to get off of our dependence on foreign oil. So you have to balance what they have to go through to produce that oil and gas. That was about what I got out of it. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
And also, I appreciate the comments that Mr. Moreno made on behalf of the council. And thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Carson?
I also will keep it short. I just wanted to wish Brittany well. Congratulations to you. My very first thing that I did as a councilwoman was attend the North Metro Chamber breakfast and sat beside you, and when I walked away from there, I said to everybody, "Who is that? Is that little Jim just going to be with us forever?" And I thought, "No, she won't." Brittany, you gave us national attention by bringing us our incentive program. Thank you for that. Thank you for everything, and I just wish you and your husband the best of everything.
Councilwoman Teter?
I also attended the ICSC meeting on Tuesday night. Went to the Business Professional Association meeting where we stuffed stockings for all the children. I also attended Friday night when Renee and Sean did their, the best to represent the city. Also, I also attended the holiday thing Saturday night for the city, and it was a great job by the staff to put that on. And also, I'd like to thank all the people that bailed me out of jail Thursday for the MDA Association.
Mayor Protem Moreno?
Just two items. As mentioned before, I spoke at the Oil and Gas Commission meeting this morning on behalf of the city council. I brought up our concerns about not being notified and our residents coming to us and us having nothing to tell them because we were just as in the dark as they were. I brought up our concerns about the proximity to the Rocky Mountain Arsenal, and I presented them with our resolution that we should have full disclosure of chemicals used in the fracking process. I think the meeting went well. I just got an update that the commission has not made a decision tonight, that they have postponed that decision until next Monday. So hopefully, we'll be hearing soon about whether or not that full disclosure will be, will be happening. The other thing is, I spoke to the director of the Oil and Gas Commission, David Neslin, and he said that Commerce City, if we desire, can be listed as that local government designee. And so we will be informed in the future, and I see that staff has already begun that process, so I appreciate your work on that. The other item is just that there was news today that the Colorado Supreme Court has ratified the proposed congressional district boundaries, also lovingly referred to as the Moreno Maps, name after someone who didn't know what he's getting himself into. But the important thing there is that Commerce City remains in the 7th Congressional District, which I think we all agreed was in the best interest of our city. So I'm excited to report that and look forward to continuing to work with Congressman Pearl Mutter or whoever we may have in the 7th Congressional District to further Commerce City's interests.
Thank you. I'll try to keep it short. I want to thank the council members that attended today's Oil and Gas meeting and represented the city. I want to thank Brittany for all of the work that she has done for our community. I did attend multiple meetings with staff. Tuesday, we were going to take a land tour that did not take place, which has been, we're having, they re-designated another time for it. Steve was there with me. The highlights, I met with a business owner on Highway 2 at the new, or going to be refurbished Oil and Lube Center with the car wash, about 6,900 block, and he is very happy with how the city has treated him and looks forward to doing more marketing and more involvement within our community from rehabilitating businesses. So it was all good news from him. Friday night, we did have the CC BPA Annual Gala. I'm glad we had good representation by the council. However, because this is our business organization within our community, I would ask that we have more staff participation from the business side of the city in the future years so that we can have some economic development support there for our businesses. Also, congratulations to the folks, the employees that put on the Christmas party, and especially to Mr. Marvin Rodriguez for an outstanding job on the holiday party. And good luck, Brittany. And if there's nothing further to come before the city council...
Mr. Mayor, is this Brittany's last meeting?
Hey, Jim, can I ask you something?
What?
Where you been for the last two hours? I'm just giving you a hard time. Yes, it is. I'm just giving you a hard time. Yes, it is.
I got her email, but I thought that wasn't going to take place for another week and a half or so. Well, anyway, thanks for your work. Thank you.
Hey, Jim, before I close the meeting, are the things working? The earpieces, are they working? Can you, that's what I mean. Word's earned. The business owner on Highway 2 at the new, or going to be refurbished Oil and Lube Center with the car wash, about 6,900 block, and he is very happy with how the city has treated him and looks forward to doing more marketing and more involvement within our community from rehabilitating businesses. So it was all good news from him. Friday night, we did have the CC BPA Annual Gala. I'm glad we had good representation by the council. However, because this is our business organization within our community, I would ask that we have more staff participation from the business side of the city in the future years so that we can have some economic development support there for our businesses. Also, congratulations to the folks, the employees that put on...